Mr. Green?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence to our men and women serving us over seas abroad. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. We have a pretty good-sized agenda tonight. I'm gonna try to expedite a couple of things so we can move right along and get to business at hand. So, um... That's gonna come off, yeah. All right. So, I need a motion to go into public comment?
Motion to go into public comment?
Second.
Okay. All right. Just so you folks know, obviously, I know a lot of people are here for Resolution 2011-07. If it's fine with the council to expedite tonight, instead of having public comment for that now, are we going to allow public comment during that resolution? So, I just wanna take a straw poll, John?
Certainly fine with me.
Tom?
That's fine.
I'd like to? Okay, good. All right, so, we're all set there. We have a full one on that, so, all right. So, Board and Committee Commission Updates. The Londonderry Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Paul Donahue, are you in attendance?
I am.
Paul, could you come on up and introduce yourself?
I'm Paul Donahue of the LHRA, and I will, I'm happy to comply with your desire to expedite. The LHRA was formed in the late '60s, as you know, and our real mission is to simply take underused parcels of land in the industrially-zoned land area south of the airport and try to put it to more productive use. And I think that our plans for this year along those lines, as we have about a little over six-tenths of an acre on Harvey Road, we're hoping to develop. We are in somewhat regular discussions with different developers to seek their input and advice for that. It's probably not the best market at the present time, but we're keeping our eyes and ears open. And other than that, our month-to-month discussions revolve around trying to be as supportive of the town government as we can, especially maybe to try to do whatever we can to help with the discussions around Pettingill Road. And we're funding a, for one year anyway, an internship for the Community Development Office.
That sounds good. All right, I guess that's all Paul has. Council, have any questions for Paul?
Paul, any update on that, I think we had a bus depot that was going, that Gostown Truck was going to do something with? Any update on that?
Yeah, it just didn't materialize. I think that their interest waned. We have an approved site plan for that parcel and continue to look for an opportunity to develop it, possibly to use that plan, but their interest waned.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom?
No, I'm good, thanks. Thanks for your service.
Paul, thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate your service to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before Art comes on up, a couple things just to review tonight, going through my notes. Meg gave me something she wanted me to read to the public. As we are now in May, she wanted me to remind our residents that May is their final opportunity to register their dog prior to receiving a civil forfeiture, which is $25 fine, plus the cost of postage up to $5. The breakdown is, an owner that's 65 or older is $2 for the first dog only, and regular fees apply for any additional dogs. $6.50 for dogs that are spayed or neutered, or a dog less than seven months old, a puppy, each, and $9 for dogs that are not spayed or neutered. And $25 civil forfeiture fee in mid-June, once the council has approved, plus a $5 cost of postage. So, if you have any questions, you can reach Meg at 432-1100, and for the Town Clerk's Office. So, please get that done if you have pets and you need to get them registered. Also, tonight for what I'm hoping will be a civil conversation for everybody, I will not be allowing any personal attacks on any of the councilors. Please make sure that your cellphones are off. When you come and speak to the mic, you need to address the mic, your name, and your address for the record. And we're not gonna be allowing outbursts, so we're here, we're gonna have a civil tone and have a conversation. All right. Step up to the mic, please, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name's Art Salitis, and I am Director of Recreation in Town and here to give you the state of recreation in town. Recreation Commission meets second Monday of every month, 7:30 in the Sunny Crest Room. People are welcome to come in, express new ideas. Just this past year, we had the idea, somebody came in about a dodgeball, adult dodgeball, which has gone over wonderfully. They were actually thinking of having to increase to two sections. They didn't, but that's how things get done in this town, with volunteers, because as you know, you guys spend very little money, or we spend very little money on recreation. I'll get to that in a second. But through the volunteers, we can offer everything that we need. Example of the volunteers, you guys haven't been down to Nelson Road Softball Field, the Adult Softball League, the Men's League, has done tremendous work down there, building a couple of retaining walls, fixing the field, doing all sorts of things. It's no cost to the town, it's just making the place better. Our fields right now are in great shape, depending upon how the weather goes. Little bit of rain, little bit of sun, it's a good mix. We don't get too much of one or the other, we'll be okay. We have noticed a bit of drop in the youth participation, but that goes along with the demographics, and it parallels the schools, which are dropping down in the younger grades. Now to our costs. I found this last week, the, in the United States, the median per capita cost for parks and recreation is $65. We're between $5 and $6. Now, I mention this because we have some problems. We don't have a vehicle. The vehicle that we have, that Sid Kerr, who's the maintenance person, drives around, it's his own truck, it's got 160,000 miles on it. If it doesn't pass inspection, we're hoping, if it doesn't pass inspection, Sid's not gonna buy another truck so he can haul around the town trailer. So, what we're gonna be looking for in the near future, and Dave and I have discussed this in the past, is some sort of pickup truck. Nothing fancy, doesn't have to be new, can be old, can be the worst one we have, doesn't matter, as long as it gets up and down the road and can pull a trailer. We tend to take very good care of our equipment. Our mower is six years old, it's in great shape. Our twister that Sid drives around at the fields is 10 years old, in great shape, but we need desperately something for Sid to drive around in, to pull the trailer. I don't think it's fair, even though we pay a mileage, with gas at four bucks a gallon, it doesn't seem quite fair to me. So, that's where we're at. That was quick, because you guys have a lot of stuff to do tonight.
Thanks, Art.
So, Art, as Dave talked to you about, we're supposed to have a leasing program that's supposed to be extremely efficient, we seem to have very good management of it. Have you guys had a conversation about that?
We have, but with other boards, every time you mention a vehicle, at least one of them starts to have palpitations and needs to take a pill for his heart, so...
Well, we got a half a dozen paramedics in the room, so it's okay.
I understand that. Yeah, we have, but it really hasn't been, we haven't gotten to the stage we're at now. And, you know, when gas is a buck and a half, two bucks a gallon, but at four, and with a vehicle, you know, 160,000 miles, so, we're looking for anything.
So, would the council be comfortable with directing the town manager to look into the possibility of working with Art, to see if we can provide a vehicle?
Absolutely. You've made my day, that's two good things I've heard about.
Any donations out there?
We'll take 'em. We're not fussy. Mr. Baldassaro's got a nice truck out there, he could probably let us... Sold! And it's a Hemi, too.
All right, anybody else have anything? Thank you, Art.
Thank you for your support.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Anybody else out there have anything else for public comment while we're in it? Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna go to public hearing. I need a motion to go into public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Can I get somebody to read Resolution 2011-06?
Just scrolling to it. Right here. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
To go into public hearing? I'm sorry. Yep, I missed it. I need a vote, so, all those in favor?
Yay.
For public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, 5-0. So, we're now in public hearing. Thanks, John. Okay. So, Tom, do you wanna read that, please?
Resolution 2011-06, a resolution relative to renaming North Perimeter Road, South Perimeter Road, and East Perimeter Road. First reading was on April 18th, 2011. Second reading, public hearing is today, May 2nd, 2011. Whereas the town of Londonderry is enabled by New Hampshire Revised Statutes Annotated 231:133 to name public highways, and whereas the Town Council established a Street Naming System Task Force to enhance public safety by reviewing and correcting addresses which are noncompliant with NH911 addressing standards, and whereas North Perimeter Road, South Perimeter Road, and East Perimeter Road have been identified as noncompliant, and whereas the task force, in cooperation and consultation with property owners, recommend the following alternate street names. Now therefore be it resolved by the Londonderry Town Council that North Perimeter Road be renamed Perimeter Road, South Perimeter Road be renamed Commerce Avenue, and East Perimeter Road be renamed Navigator Road, to become effective on July 1st, 2011. Properties will be renumbered according to the town addressing policy. So...
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Bring it to the council for discussion. So, this, we read this out a couple, one meeting ago. Does the council have any objections to these changes? I don't think they're fine. Yes, I think they're fine? No.
Any males?
Dave, have we contacted people that live on this road?
I think Karen can walk us through the process they used.
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee was approached by the Manchester Airport towards the end of the winter, beginning of springtime, because of the access road going through there. They knew that we were gonna be renaming these roads, and they wanted to do it in conjunction with the access road. So, we had a meeting with them, as well as all the other owners up in that area, on these three roads, and explained the situation, gave them all the opportunity to send us names that they were interested in us changing it to, and we've come up with these names here. John has a map over there, and you just got a small, reduced size in front of you of the area that we're going to be changing. Letter A, which is now North Perimeter Road and goes into Manchester, is going to be the only perimeter road that's gonna be in Londonderry. That actually has no properties that front on it that are taxable within our jurisdiction. The next section is, not L...
J.
J. J was South Perimeter Road, and that's now gonna be Commerce Way. And the third one is M, over on the right, is East Perimeter Road, and that's gonna be assigned Navigator Road to that section. The other letters that are on this map indicate other areas within the airport that are gonna be renamed for streets that are going in that are airport streets. We're gonna be bringing back some of the old roads that used to be up there, such as Galaxy and Sparks Avenue, and then we have a couple other names that we're gonna be using at letters D and E.
So far, so far you haven't had any, anybody notify you?
We haven't had anything but positive feedback for this, because of perimeter, perimeter, perimeter. I think, you know, they're glad to get their own individual names that isn't an east and a west and south, so the mail isn't confused and things aren't going to the wrong places and so forth. So, everything that we've done with this so far has been positive, there's been no negatives.
Okay.
And we've been in communication, too, with the engineering department at the airport and the project manager for the airport access road at DOT. They've been, they've been involved in the process. Again, DOT is willing to work with us and put up any names on the signs that, as appropriate. And again, we have support from the airport on this one.
All right. Is there anybody here in the audience that has any objection to this road name changes? Okay. All right. Thank you. Council, any other questions? Joe? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, let's bring it to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2011-06, please vote in favor, say by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, 5-0. Motion, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the agenda for Old Business, we had the fiscal year 12 goals and objectives to...
Close the public hearing.
Okay, sorry, yep. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 5-0, motion passed. Thank you. All right. For the Old Business, we have our FY12 goals. Is the council okay with moving them to the 16th?
I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone our discussion on FY12 goals and objectives to our May 16th meeting.
Okay. Second. Okay. All right. Motion in a second to move the goals to the 16th. Dave, do we need a vote on that, or just...
On a motion, you do.
All right. All those in favor to moving the goals and objectives to the 16th, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, 5-0. Motion passes. All right. New Business. Resolution 2011-07. Can I get someone to read that, please?
Sure.
I got it. Intermunicipal agreement with the town of Derry to provide the fire and medical emergency dispatch services to the town of Londonderry. First reading, 5211, adopt 5211. Whereas the voters at recent town meetings and the town council has expressed an interest in identifying operating efficiencies within town government, and whereas the town manager has encouraged to seek out opportunities for consolidating services within and outside town government, and whereas the town of Derry maintains fire and emergency medical dispatch centers which provide services to several area communities, and whereas the town of Derry is positioned to assume the responsibility for the town of Londonderry for mutual financial advantage of both communities while retaining a high level of professional services. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of Londonderry that the town manager is hereby authorized to execute a contract for the fire and emergency medical dispatch services between the town of Derry and the town of Londonderry, contingent upon approval of the Derry Town Council and the Attorney General's Office pursuant to RSA 53-A. I'm gonna hold my motion. I believe the town manager has a presentation, and we'd probably recommend that we yield to the public and hear from them first before we add our comments, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have an addition to this resolution?
Yes, we do. It's not on here, Dave.
Well, I have it right here.
Yep. John, could you read that into the record?
And further, to recommend to the voters at the 2010 town meeting to allocate savings realized from this agreement to increase expenditures for fire emergency personnel in the form of additional personnel or overtime.
Thank you, John.
Hey, folks, let me apologize, I'm up here texting. My daughter's in the library, and I'm waiting for my wife to pick her up. I'm not ignoring any of you, I just wanna make sure she gets picked up. So, my apologies.
Okay. So, John has read it, he wants to yield to the town manager. Does the council have any issue with it?
No.
Okay. Dave, please go.
As John, as simply, this is a resolution which considers consolidating with the town of Derry to provide fire EMS dispatch services for the town of Londonderry. The resolution is remanded for the following reasons. First, it aligns with the council goal to provide a cost-effective government to achieve greatest value at lowest cost, as recommended by the, or directed by the council during the last goal-setting process last April and May. It enhances public safety by assuring that at least two telecommunicators will be on duty 24/7 at the central fire in Derry. It also addresses concerns we heard during the FY12 budget process, in which there were concerns that the proposed combination of police-fire dispatch lacked the necessary synergy, and that the procedures were different between the police and fire, the terminology was different, and it wasn't really good match. So, we hopefully have addressed that concern with this particular proposal. And it also would provide the council with an opportunity to realistically relocate resources in the FY13 budget for emergency personnel. Now, to explain that last point, in FY08, during negotiations with the IAFF local, the town agreed to the IF goal to reduce workweek from 48 hours to 42 hours. The result of that is, when they had a 48-hour shift, we had essentially 13 personnel we could pull from for each shift. Well, when you transitioned from a 48 to 42 hours, you had to fill four shifts as opposed to three. Consequently, we can only, we only have enough personnel to fill that minimum staffing of 10, and any vacant shifts caused by illness, vacations, training, injuries, whatever, would have to be filled by overtime. The fire chief at that time estimated that an additional $189,000 we'd need for overtime, which town meeting boards did approve as part of that collective bargaining agreement. The fire fire ambulance overtime budget was increased to $455,680 at that time, and currently stands in the fiscal year to start July 1st at $410,535, while our actual overtime expenses peaked in FY09 at $485,621. What this proposal does, it presents an opportunity to relocate resources to fund emergency personnel. Chief McCaffrey estimates that an additional $105,000 is needed to fully fund the 10-personnel shift target, which we both strive to achieve. We anticipate the anticipated FY13 savings would be $126,805. Now, from that figure, we have to maintain some degree of funding for radio maintenance for our mobiles and other radios we're gonna maintain here in town, but the balance would be available to fund additional emergency personnel. The proposed agreement, which has been posted on the site, is a standard 53A agreement, which is under state law. It provides a set of provisions within the contract, it also provides for review and approval by the state Attorney General's Office. And the main points of that agreement is Derry Fire will provide fire EMS dispatching for Londonderry, as it currently provides for Wyndham, Chester, Hampstead, and Auburn. It has a proposed five-year term. It requires that the center be staffed 24/7 by two telecommunicators. In order to hold down costs and to increase our flexibility in the future, if a future council decides to retain or return to Londonderry dispatching, we'll be loaning some hardware to Derry as opposed to beating that over to them. They'll be responsible for maintaining that hardware. If the hardware becomes obsolete, we will replace it, but that'll allow us to keep some flexibility with respect to the council's policies in the future, should this resolution be adopted. There is, there is a parameter within the contract that a cost may be reopened to address additional unforeseen circumstances. During our discussions with Derry, is, we've agreed that the concept is, is to address those situations and costs which would result in an additional burden to whichever entity is providing that service. For example, if the federal government, this is really a stretch, I don't think this would happen, just give you an example. If the federal government decided to mandate a certain staffing level for local dispatching, which would result in additional costs, that obviously is an unforeseen circumstance, which would require the hiring of additional personnel, which, if Londonderry retained the service, we'd see that additional cost by ourselves. With a regional dispatch, we'd have to share in that cost, so it would be an opener for negotiation. We do not anticipate reopening negotiations for issues which we currently fund, such as salaries, benefits, and other operating costs. So, that is a snapshot of the proposed agreement. The timeframe is targeted for implementation on July 1st, depending on, first of all, whether the resolution is approved, and if it is approved, the time in which it takes to approve the resolution, time for the Attorney General to review the resolution and approve it, actually intermunicipal agreement, and also the time for hiring staff. So, that timeline may slide, and if implementation occurs after July 1st, we will simply prorate the first-year expenses with the town of Derry.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. All right. So, does the council wanna ask Dave any questions, or does we wanna go to the public? However you guys wanna do it.
It would be my preference. These people all here, they obviously wanna be heard. I got a ton of questions, but I'd be happy to listen to them first, that's just my preference.
That's fine. Okay. All right. We'll take it out to the public. So, I'm sure everybody's got questions, so if you have a question, please come up to the mic, state your name and your address for the record.
Oh, no, there's questions, take, make a call.
Oh, sorry. We're looking for comments or questions in regards to the resolution in front of us about the dispatch services. So, come on up, Kath.
Kathy Wagner, 7 Fiddler's Ridge Road. I got a lot of questions, too. First of all, Dave, why wasn't this mentioned at town meeting? That this was a cut coming?
We weren't sure it was coming or not.
But why... Well, then, my question is, outside of, where did this direction come, that we are cutting fire dispatch? Did the public ask for, or was it the directive of them?
The directive of the town council during the budget process was to look to make our services as efficient as we can at the least cost, and when we went through the budget process, the council concurred that combining police and fire dispatch was not appropriate, and then the directive continued to seek opportunities both within and outside of town government.
Okay. So, this was a directive of the council, of the sitting council or the prior council?
Prior council.
Okay. And so, discussions, according to paperwork, I have a memo, excuse me, on February 2nd. It was pretty obvious it was under discussion then, why wasn't this not brought up at town My recollection at town meeting was, an amendment was presented to put $400,000 back in the budget, because we were afraid of cuts, and overwhelmingly, people were up at the microphone saying, "We didn't want any more cuts on safety issues." And we were confirmed, you guys confirmed that you were not going to try to cut anymore.
We're not cutting... Do you have a question about safety, or do you have a question about dispatch? They're two separate entities.
No, no, no. I'm getting to it, Joe, okay?
Thank you.
My point is, this should've been discussed with the general public all along, because you know what, Joe? This is about safety. You don't think the communications dispatch center at the fire department has nothing to do with safety, sir? You are wrong.
I don't.
I might be able to lend some clarification to Ms. Wagner's question, if I, and Dave, tell me if I don't recall this correctly. As I recall, we went through the budget process, we had police and fire, we looked at a combination thereof, there was a study done, we showed that it was not financially feasible at this Sometime during that, after that was concluded, I believe, the town manager delivered a message to the council that, you know, "Do you want me to continue to have conversations with the, you know," and I think the town of Derry came up and said, you know, "They could possibly offer fire dispatch." I believe what the council said at that point was, was, you know, "Always explore all opportunities." Doesn't mean we're gonna do it, but let's explore all opportunities." I think that's the way it went about.
I guess my, I'm angry here, because I find out Thursday that we have a contract here, and tomorrow night, the Derry Council is voting. So, is this a done deal?
It's only a done deal if the council votes...
It's only a done deal if the council votes on it tonight.
But why did Derry schedule it? I mean, Sean, you and I sat together on this board. We got angry because of how quick trash got shoved down our throat, and we got angry about open space decisions, how fast sometimes those got slammed down our throat. You don't think this is getting slammed down our throat? You have not had one outside of this, nobody in the public has been able to voice anything about it. And the last thing I remember about people voicing was on the floor of town meeting when we voted back in $20,000 because we cut $20,000 on equipment that they need to go into fires to rescue people, and to, and that was voted back in. We cut on call firefighters. I think there's a general message here that I think you guys are going too far. What is it, and what is it that you think that fire isn't important? I mean, you're gutting this department, and I want to know why.
Well, but you're saying that we're cutting it. We're not cutting the service. The service is going to be performed by Derry.
But is it a bit, is...
Well, okay.
The untangibles here, there's untangibles here, Tom.
I understand, but let me finish my point.
You are cutting a service.
Well, no.
You are cutting a service.
Kathy, let him speak.
If it's passed, all right, the service will be performed at Derry, all right? Right now, we have a service that's performed by one dispatcher per shift. This is a two-person shift. Granted, it involves other towns, but the question is, is it safer or not? Is it better or not? And those are the questions you should be asked. When you say the word "gut" and "cut," you infer that this position is being eliminated. It's not, Kathy, so let's just talk about what's, whether it's better or not.
Well, then, yes, it is being eliminated, because when I call 432-1124...
It goes to Concord.
No, it does not. It goes, I'm sorry, Sean, the number is 432-1124.
You're not calling the emergency number then, Kathy.
No, I'm not, but I don't necessarily have to have an emergency to call the fire department. I might have a question about something in my home that's dangerous or toxic, and I'm calling them, and I'm losing that service when you take that out. It means I have to contact Derry. I mean, I don't know what kind of service, I get, I can call that fire department anytime. I can show up at that fire department anytime. I, I mean, it is a safety issue. It is not tangible things that I can pull out and say, "Oh, you know, it's the little things. It's the small things that the people in this community need and want."
And Kathy, it's also...
And it is safety, because people show up there with sick children, Tom.
I understand, Kathy, but there's also other considerations, too. There is a problem with overtime. It's not being funded, and this is a manner to do that. Now, wait a minute, let me finish. That was a problem when you were on the council, and it has to get addressed now. We just can't continue to unfund that.
Has anybody asked the public if they're willing to spend the 20 extra dollars to fund this?
We had a vote last time. Did anybody offer to do that, Kathy? You were on the council two years ago, right?
That's right.
And that problem existed then.
And we funded it. The community funded it, and it cut down at the end of...
Really? I have a quote from Captain Rogers that says that...
Tom, I don't want to get into a debate with you.
They were shorthanded.
They were shorthanded, and yes, you know what? I made a huge mistake, and I'll be the first to admit it on this council for not defending the fire department and making sure we had proper services.
Well, then, don't come here and accuse people of doing something. We're trying to resolve a problem, Kathy. Kathy, we're trying to resolve a problem, and everybody's going to have, they're saying this thing, but don't say the word "gut" and "cut." It's a change. It may not be the best thing, it may be the best thing. Let's look at it. Let's have a discussion about it.
Let's have contractual discussion, Tom, since you're good at this.
Well, let me give you, you heard what Dave said. The contract, as you said in your, in your article, cannot be unilaterally changed by the town of Derry. There's triggers.
Okay. Just wait, just wait. I have some, okay.
So, let's use our facts. Let's look at the contract.
Okay. Let's take section 4.1.
Okay.
I'm going to do one thing right now because this resolu...
Dominate it. I'm sorry, I'll stop after this.
Okay, that's my key, okay, because...
Because I know there's a lot of other...
There are a lot of people that have questions, Kathy.
I'll just end after this.
And you know that, so, all right.
I know. I'm sorry.
She's been up here like seven minutes. Let's, let's all just take a...
No, I'm just, I'm making it known, that's all. Let's just be considerate of everybody else.
Okay. I'll, I'll stop after this one, okay? Where did they get the numbers to come up with the fees? Like, what, what numbers did you guys use? What years? Like, what did you present to them so they knew their dispatch numbers?
With respect to the operating costs?
Yeah.
Okay. What we did is they, they estimated the cost, add two additional dispatchers as far as the $235,000.
Okay.
That's also paying for...
But what year? Like, you used numbers from what year? So that they could get an idea of saying, "You get 500 calls a year." That's what I'm trying to get to, Dave.
We've been using the most recently completed year.
Okay. So, you went back, okay. So, the numbers are up to date as of last year.
That's correct.
Then, I have a question. They, and this is, they have the right to change fees according to unforeseen circumstances or our population going up or our calls going up. Was the Axis Road mentioned and figured? Was Woodmont figured? Was Penningill figured? If any of these projects come down, I would say that's going to add cost, and I'll, and so, I don't necessarily think that we might be saving as much money here as we think. And that's my...
I think that's a safe bet. I think any estimate is probably, if you look at the experience, I think when you, when you, when fire departments say, "Oh, regional dispatch will save a million bucks," it's probably like when you renovate your bathroom. It's never the estimate that it is. I agree with that.
And, and if you look at the, the structure, it does go down. I mean, the biggest year is 120 grand, and then it keeps going down year after year after year after year, even in the projected numbers we're getting now. So, if there's any growth, any potential growth here in Lunandary, there is an option for Derry to come in and raise those fees up.
To renegotiate.
No, it says raise the fee.
No, it says they will trigger a renegotiation.
Right, and we can pull out, but at that point, how much does it cost us to come back?
It's, right, okay.
And, and at some point...
But it's not unilateral.
Are we, are we trying to save money to spite ourselves?
Okay, then let me ask you a question. I've seen, I've gotten emails from people that have suggested that Lunandary is, begin a regional dispatch.
I, I agree with that 100%.
Okay, then it, therefore, it's a revenue issue, we're not a safety issue, right? You'd agree with me, wouldn't you? Because if Lunandary can have a regional center, then it's not a safety issue.
Yeah, no, it would still be a safety issue, Tom, because at least it's staying here in the community, and Lunandary is not a small community, and I don't believe that it isn't a safety issue.
But it's not an inherent safety issue by a regional center.
How do you know that?
You may think that Lunandary's...
How do you know that?
But you may think Lunandary's run better.
I think it is a safety issue, and I don't want to, because I want to give other people a chance to talk, but I honestly believe that in the long run, this will be a safety issue.
Well, and my concern is that as well, too, and the studies that I've seen have said that the real safety issue is single-person dispatch centers.
Just, just as a note to that comment, just want to note that 227 local fire departments in New Hampshire, of which only six, six of them continue to be self-dispatched. 98% of the communities are already on this, okay, and they're a lot larger than us. So, I don't see them saying that's an unsafe transition.
Yeah, just a point of clarification for Kathy's information is that it appears that there's a decreasing balance of funds to be hopefully allocated for emergency personnel. That's because if you look at it, we had no way of properly identifying what our future operating costs would be if we were maintaining service here in Lunandary while we know what the cost will be in Derry. So, experience tells me that those two lines will track pretty closely because we're all dealing the same thing. They're all dealing with personnel costs, and so, historically, personnel costs are pretty close, are pretty much the same between employers for telecommunications. The other issue is, is that, you know, obviously, Derry doesn't control our council agenda, nor do I control theirs. So, even though they are looking at this tomorrow night, there is, there is no kind of directive or edict saying the Lunandary council's got to act on this this evening or else deals is taken off the table. If the council doesn't reach a decision tonight, they don't reach a decision tonight, and just, you know, Lunandary proceeds at its own pace, as does, I presume, the Derry town council will.
Thanks for clarifying, Dave. Tom, you had a question for Dave?
Dave, I have a question on the contract language, since we opened the door to discuss the contract. Question on the term. This is a five-year...
That's correct.
Contract.
Right.
That would, under the current language, would terminate in June of 2016. Now, if the council decides to move forward with this and engage in this contract, and Derry council also does, we find us, we'll find ourselves, it appears, in a five-year contract. Now, in this, in the past town meeting, the legislative body spoke to us about public safety issues and, and made some changes with their votes by virtue of funding certain things. If the legislative body next spring, in the form of the deliberative session, our new form of government, expresses themselves along similar lines, are there any off-ramps for the community to reverse themselves if the legislative body comes forward and says, "We want to fund at some incremental increase of, of budget, local dispatch"? Are there any off-ramps for the community to do that, or are they going to be locked in for five years?
Perhaps in a breach of contract, each community can remove themselves from the contract anytime with one year's notice. And that's really more, that's obviously, is probably a financial protection for Derry, and it's, and it's an operational protection for Lunandary in that you don't want to enter on a contract in which you need to have third days' notice to, to, in which the contract is null and void, and which would not give us time to staff up for local dispatch again. So, there's a 365-day period in which you work out through until the contract actually expires.
So, the way that would play out, so if the legislative body comes back and, for example, overwhelmingly speaks to us and makes some decisions next spring, then the spring of 2013 would be the first opportunity for us to reinstitute dispatch.
That's correct.
If the community wanted to do that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sir? Step right up.
Yes.
How much Keith? How you doing?
Keith Tharp, can you hear me? Keith Tharp, 245 Winding Pond Road.
You're good.
Absolutely, 100% against it. I don't understand why you guys continue to target the fire department. I got to imagine there's a few other places we can make cuts at. My questions are, how many towns were there? Four other towns on top of Derry, so five towns total they're dispatching for?
That's correct.
And now, we're going to add Lunandary, which is a fairly significant-sized community. What happens when they realize their call volume goes past the point where they've allotted their, their personnel for, and they realize they need to go into this renegotiation situation? And we say, "No, we don't want to pay that much money." Then we have to wait a year to get out? Is that what, is that what, is that what I'm hearing?
Sounds like it, yeah.
So, so they, so they get to go ahead and raise it based on, on their need to have more people because their call volume has increased greater than they thought it was going to. I mean, I'm sure they know that it's going to increase, but it's increased greater than they thought it was going to, so now we go from paying the amount we thought we were going to pay to a larger amount.
No, 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 they, you enter a renegotiation, correct.
Under that particular scenario is that Derry's going to notify Lunandary by August 1st, and if the parties don't reach agreement by September 1st, then the contract terminates as of the next July 1st, or next fiscal year.
Okay. Just lost my other question. Oh, is there, have we, did we figure out, is incurred into these costs that are in that projection are the costs of putting this into action? And then, have we thought about the cost of taking it and reinstalling it back in this town once we decide we don't like it?
The transition costs are included to go over there. We've maintained ownership of, of the equipment. They'll be, they'll be, we'll be loaning to them, so that equipment will be coming back to us, and I'm sure there may be some transition costs and hiring costs should we decide to return to Lunandary.
I think you guys need to find another place. I'm tired of having to come in here and stick up for the fire department because I, I don't understand why we need to continue to attack them. These guys volunteer in our community on a continuous basis. They're doing Thanksgiving dinners for the seniors, they're out there doing child safety seat checks, all these kinds of things in the community as, on a volunteer basis, over and above what we've asked them to do, and they continue to do what we asked them to do after continuing to get beat up by us. I'm against this, and I think you guys should be, too. Thanks.
Comment, please. I'd like to comment on that.
Go ahead, Joe.
There's a very big difference between a call center and a firefighter. We're not talking about frontline firefighters.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay? Please understand that.
Okay. Michael?
Yes, Michael Brown, Five Carousell Court. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's appreciated. This is two former counselors and the first three speakers. I think it's important to look back at the council goals and the history of this proposal. As stated earlier by Dave in his presentation, the resolution that's in front of you tonight is, is not a new discussion item in any way, shape, or form. In fact, this resolution is simply the fulfillment of a council goal from fiscal year 11 that directed Dave to review the town's organizational structure with the goal of reducing and streamlining costs. That was one of our number-one goals. In addition, he was also directed to deliver an FY12 budget which resulted in a level-funded tax rate. It was with these two goals in mind that Dave recommended in the fall of 2010 that fire dispatch services be consolidated into the police department. These are all facts and all known and all established at this point in time. While that recommendation was ultimately deferred from being part of the FY12 budget due to the infrastructure and costs and synergy concerns that Dave mentioned between the two departments in Lunandary, the council agreed to have the town manager pursue other opportunities for consolidating fire dispatch and to keep it at the forefront of the council's goals for the following year. This direction was given to Dave during our January 17, 2011, public hearing on the FY12 budget. He even included a memo that's still online that addresses all of this. The town manager subsequently followed up on this directive and pursued other options as he was directed to. The results of that effort are in front of you tonight. That's the history of this. Regarding the practice of centralizing fire dispatch communications and talking to Dave about this all the way back into the midsummer as we were looking for areas of opportunity for the budget, we did some research and we saw that having more than one fire department dispatched from a central location is, is not a novel premise in the state of New Hampshire or nationwide for that matter. Approximately 98% of the fire departments in this state already do this. 98% already successfully use some form of central or regional communications for fire dispatch. Some communities, nine exact, dispatch fire communications through their local police department, which is the model that we previously investigated and determined we couldn't do. Several other communities joined together in smaller regional dispatch centers like the one being proposed as part of this resolution with Derry Fire Alarm. A significant number of New Hampshire communities have joined one of the three large regional dispatch centers that serve anywhere between 23 to 40 fire departments each in the Capital Region, in the Lakes Region, and southwestern New Hampshire. As local budgets have become tighter and tighter over the years, government's been required to become more efficient and cost-effective. The centralization of fire dispatch communications is one of those ways many of these communities have followed to try to assist in this effort. At this point in time, there are only six departments in New Hampshire that continue to self-dispatch, Lunandary being one of them. In terms of the agreement, I read it myself. Lunandary residents, from my perspective, when we gain the benefit of having two full-time dispatchers on duty 24/7, which is a requirement of this contract, as one resident, one homeowner, one taxpayer, and I have family members that live with me, I do view that as an enhancement to safety. I know others are going to disagree, but that's my personal opinion. I view that extra dispatcher 24/7 as an enhancement to my safety. In addition, the infrastructure costs and the synergy issues that were mentioned with the previous merger are eliminated through this model. In terms of the projected savings, based on the contract, and we know its estimates, but after you transition the one-time costs out of 110,800, we do generate some savings in the first year. While some may view this 32,000 in year one as a, as an insignificant amount, I respectfully disagree. Consolidations like this in the private sector typically incur much larger costs, and the ROI is typically further down the road. And we've noted that in year two through five, it ramps up quite significantly with the net result of a five-year agreement generating $463,000 in savings, an average of $93,000 per year. Given what... Given what Dave is recommending tonight, which I, I actually didn't consider, if, if he's recommending that you, as a council, make a policy decision to return that annual savings into frontline responder funding, which I think is what most people are talking about, that's actually a very good idea, and one that I would support, that you reinvest that money as opposed to put it into the general fund for tax rate purposes. Moving forward, I'd say, given the due diligence that Dave's performed, the history of this, the fact that it's not new, the fact that we did discuss this, it's not dropping out of the sky in any way, shape, or form, okay? The agreement is in alignment with the council's goals of the last two years. We wanted to reorganize operations. We asked Dave to find ways to do it, to be more cost-effective and efficient. And he's come up with a model that 98% of the other communities already follow, a tested, successful model, okay? So I'm here as one citizen, one resident, saying that I'm asking you to support this. I'm in favor of it. I think it's a good idea, and I think it's overdue. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Captain?
Good evening. Jim Roger, 5 Crosby Lane, also captain with the fire department. I, I appreciate Dave Karen, appreciate what he's doing, consolidation, strategic alliances, stuff like that. That all makes sense. It makes sense in the business world. Let me just put on my taxpayer hat for, for one second. One thing, $95,000 worth of equipment that was appropriated through federal grants to bring them over to Dairy Dispatch so they could dispatch for, you know, all the other communities and reap the benefits of that as a taxpayer, I have a, that's my number-one issue. My second issue is the supervisory of the radio boxes. $300 per radio box for our commercial customers, our commercial customers, our commercial partners that we rely on and work with on a regular basis. $300, I think, colates, and please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong in my numbers, $57,000 worth of revenue. $57,000 worth of revenue that could come back and stay in my town as a taxpayer, my town, Lunen Dairy, okay? So I'm looking at that right there. The other one I'm looking at is Kathy Wagner was absolutely correct. I get phone calls. A lot of the phone calls I get are even members of the council, and it's not about a budgetary issue, it's not about that. It's, "Hey, Jim Roger, I got a problem at my house. What should I do?" You know what I mean? It's different things like that. Those are the phone calls we receive, never mind all the numerous business phone calls that come in every day because these, these citizens that we have, they just don't know how to classify their emergency, nor do they know if maybe they might have an emergency or might not have an emergency. So those are a couple of things as, as a, as a taxpayer I look at. I really, Mark Tatro came before the council, two, probably two years ago, and brought forth when he was doing his revamping of our permit issue, permit systems. He wanted to charge $150 per box for supervisory costs. He thought it would be a good business practice. The council at the present time said, "No, we don't think that's a good idea. We think our commercial partners pay enough into the town, let's, let's, we're not going to charge them." But all of a sudden, it's okay for Dairy Fire to charge $300 to our customers here in Lunen Dairy. I, I really have a problem with that. Now, I'm going to put on my, my fire hat. Safety was mentioned a couple of times. When we talk about safety, at Lunen Dairy Fire Dispatch, we have SOGs and policies. Let's just call them administrative controls for, as, as what they, what they should be. Administrative controls are there, procedures are there with the, with the dispatch system that we have. We have a third function that we use. It's called common sense, and it's called putting the weight on the shift commander's shoulders, and that's what they're instructed to do. Anytime an administrative control does not fit the situation, they are instructed to ask the captain. The captain in the chief's absence runs the fire department. I get calls all the time. There's been times on the fly where I've changed the response like that because of pertinent information that my dispatch has given me. If you want to talk about safety and you want to bring it up, I'll bring it up tonight. I'm going to bring up 38 Hemlock Street, okay? On the way to that fire, I received critical information that, as an incident commander, I requested an additional dairy engine to the scene of that fire, okay? Not a mutual aid engine, to the fire to lay a supply line 800 feet away from near hydrant. Guess what, gentlemen? It took 23 minutes, okay? That wouldn't have happened with the Lunen Dairy Fire Dispatch because it would have been fire alarm to car two. What actually are you calling for? Are you calling that engine directly to the scene? I would have got the closest engine to the scene. When I am involved with the hazmat district, I go to chief's meetings, I talk to other chiefs, okay? They're not totally happy with Dairy Fire as a dispatch, a regional dispatch. And you could say it may be a training thing, maybe training would, would over, but it's really a common sense thing. Our dispatch is 42 square miles. They know the industry, they know what's going on in this town. They communicate well with the shift commander, who has the responsibility of not only the firefighters that are, that are with me every day, but the responsibility for you people to make sure that you're safe and to make the best possible decisions and not live with a bad situation because they're rigid. I asked Chief McCaffrey today, I said, "If we have a problem over there in Dairy, how are we going to handle it, chief?" He said, "Well, I'll, I'll go over and talk to George Clawger, go up in his office." Dairy Fire was over last week to our fire department. Captain O'Brien asked if a problem had been corrected. Guess what? That was on the 13th. It hasn't been corrected yet. I don't want to live through that again, nor do I think any taxpayer or citizen in the town of Lunen Dairy should have to live through that. Gentlemen, we have a good system here. Let's not be penny wise and dollar foolish. Let's keep doing what, what we need to do. It's the right way, it works for us. I know there's a lot of different situations out there, and unfortunately, I think the public, without having lived through it like we lived through it, they see a dispatcher, they see a microphone, a chair, a computer, and they think that's what it is, but they're forgetting one of the components. It's a computer that sits on their shoulders. I think we do a great job in Lunen Dairy, and I think our telecommunications do a great job. I urge you not to make any changes to keep it right where it is. Thank you very much.
Captain Rogers.
I have a question for you.
Okay, sure.
Dairy, Lunen Dairy runs a single-person dispatch each shift.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
What happens if, for some reason, they're incapacitated? Any minute, monitime?
Okay, you're talking about if the dispatcher had a-
Passes out, passes out. He's diabetic, he passes out.
One of the firefighters would, would have to jump in.
What if the firefighters are out on a call?
Then soon as that person felt any signs and symptoms, they would notify Lunen Dairy Police, and they would fill in for us.
Okay. And the reason I bring this up is because when I did my research on this, I looked up the Dairy Fire Study before they put in their dispatch system, their current regional system.
Right.
And that was one of the issues. And it seems to be, it's a recurring issue. The US Fire Administration says that's one of the three reasons that single dispatch centers are not considered as, as good as regional dispatch centers.
Right.
Okay. So you'd agree with me, that's a concern, right?
It, it would be a concern. And the nice thing, we have a great working relationship with the Lunen Dairy Police Department where we back each other up, because we've actually had times, and I don't know if Bobby Jones is still here, but we have times when the police radios or phones have failed, but we have a backup plan where, where a police dispatcher will come over to Lunen Dairy, you know, come over to our dispatch and work it out that way. So that was another question I forgot to ask, but you just, you know, helped me to think about that, is we have a good working relationship with Lunen Dairy PD, and we kind of back each other up in that aspect.
But there's going to be some sort of delay, correct?
There possibly could, well-
Folks, please, let the captain answer, okay?
Yeah. Hey, I know it has happened in the, in the past where LPD has had a problem. I really think that it's set up that it's travel time from our building to their building, and I think they, they can operate that way.
And I bring this up because I remember during the SAFER grant application, or when you're presenting it to the council, you constantly reminded the council then that more hands are better at a scene, that it's an exponential helping at, at a fire, at an accident.
You're absolutely correct.
So wouldn't the same logic apply at a dispatch center? Even forgetting that somebody being incapacitated, but just multiple calls, you've, you've spoken well about how Lunen Dairy's increase in simultaneous calls have been going up, one of the reasons for the SAFER grant application, okay?
46%.
Okay. Well, that means that that single dispatcher is being taxed tremendously, correct?
That, that is correct, but we, we're real lucky. I mean, I could think of, you know, Betsy Mann, Jerry Johnson, Sue Roy-
Not taking away anything from these people, they're great people.
No, but what, what I'm saying is, the nice thing about them, and, and even our Fire Marshal Brian Johnson, is they all live in town. So right away, like Sue Roy, I, I can't even tell you how many times, you know, I'm at the fire scene, or I'm at the hazmat, or whatever it may be, and I come back and there's all these people in the station, and, you know, the dispatcher will say, "Oh, you know, Sue came in right away, Jerry came in right away." So that's kind of like the benefit. I think if you looked and you saw like the people who are sitting behind you tonight, these, these are firefighters and telecommunications that live in town and have families in town. They're our stakeholders. The other people that, that come in, four in the morning, that, that fire that happened, that was 4:29 when that call came in at Hemlock Street, we had two dispatches right away, right, right in, and then actually another dispatcher came in, and Sue Roy actually came to the scene and brought rehab down there, brought water and stuff like that. So that's, that's the other component that we look, we miss sometimes. People are our number-one resource. They're our number-one resource, and we're really lucky in Lunen Dairy. These people that sit behind me, they do an extraordinary job, and we're lucky. They, they still care. They still care, they still show up, they still come in. I think Keith made a comment, you know, he was kind of saying that the, the fire department's getting beaten up. I was telling my wife tonight at dinner, "I feel like the fire department is eroding, okay? The fire, there's an erosion at the fire department, where the waves are coming in and little pieces are going away. Gentlemen, we're 42 square miles, we're only going to grow, we can only do so much. The staffing tonight, as we sit, are nine firefighters. Not acceptable. It's not acceptable at all."
And what we're presenting to you, Captain, is an ability to help fund that deficit.
It's, it, it, it's a plan that, you know, I, I respect, Sean, I, I respect you for doing that, and I respect you for looking, look for ways. I respect Dave Karen for, for the way he, he goes about the town to look for the best bang for the buck. Unfortunately, because of my experience with, with, you know, Dairy Fire, and I'm not just saying anything about Dairy Fire, I think one of the problems is they're not flexible enough. If you, if you looked at the two dispatches, if you looked at Dairy Fire and you walked in, you'd say, "Wow, a very contemporary building, a very contemporary dispatch." If you looked in Lunen Dairy, it's much older, and there's one person sitting there. But is, is, the technology is night and day that they have in their dispatch compared to Dairy's. So if I had to pick the two, if I did an objective analysis of the two, I would go with Lunen Dairy Fire Dispatch, the way that they handle calls and the way that they do. And that's just my experience and my interaction with professionals that I work with in this, in this surrounding communities. I mean, if, if you really want to find out for yourselves, maybe ask some of their other customers, you know, "Has there been problems? How does it work?" I mean, that, that's a good way to really find out.
We've heard from, at least I, I think all the council has gotten emails from firefighters. Some have suggested that Lunen Dairy start its own regional dispatch center. So my question is, it's not the concept of a regional dispatch center versus what Lunen Dairy has. It's you, you may think your product would be superior than Dairy's, is that correct?
I, I, I do, and, and one of the reasons, if, if Lunen Dairy became a regional dispatch area, like other towns such as Litchfield has, has approached us and said, "Jeez, we really," because they, I think they appreciate what we do, but that would still keep it in the hometown. It would still keep it in the hometown, we'd still have the same connection, somebody could call the captain, somebody could talk, you'd still have that personalization would, would still be there if Lunen Dairy became a regional dispatch area. Yeah, we'd have to put on more, more people to, to do it. That, maybe that would solve the problem of having, you know, one person there, you'd have a two-person dispatch. But I mean, I think Kathy Wagner really, that's really what she was going for. And I'll tell you, anybody in this room, there's plenty of people in this room who have called me at different times at the fire station. They didn't need a fire truck, red lights, and siren, but you know what? They had a problem. They had a problem, they had an issue, and we solved it. Sometimes we solve it telephonically by on the phone, sometimes we have to send the apparatus, sometimes it's, it's, it's the ambulance. But it's a more personal touch that we have here for the citizens of Lunen Dairy.
Thank you. Thanks, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Wingsores, 2 Gale Road. Gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to your 2011 town meeting. Here is your legislative body. Within five days, this many people were polarized by this issue. I don't know how many, how many people are residents, please raise your hand. Okay. And I wouldn't take a straw vote, well, I will. How many are against this? So-
How many are employees?
Of what?
How many, how many are families of employees? That's a good question, too. That's a good question.
It's a valid question. It's a valid question.
It's a valid question. So, again, listen, folks, just, just so you recognize, okay? You really, you, you think that, you know, I know that we're polarized, and at least some of us are, but we're looking at every option for everybody, because you're not the only ones in the room that have questions about taxes and where the dollars are being spent. We're up here, and believe me, it's a thankless job, and I get no charge out of seeing a roomful of people that are pissed off, because I deal with pissed-off people all day in my job. So I really don't enjoy coming here and having, you know, I'm a, I'm a, I'm not a nice guy.
Okay, Sean, I appreciate that.
But let me just finish. My point is, all we're doing is looking at an opportunity. So don't be, you know, disgusted and asking by the questions, because it's a valid question.
Okay. And so, looking at this opportunity, I would like you to remember at the last town meeting that we had, that this council decided to cut certain things from the budget that were put back in, because your legislative body decided that they value that more than they value the two cents or three cents that they were going to save on their tax dollars. Now we're talking about $20 that we would save on our tax dollars, potentially. I have an argument-
Well, no, no, I don't think there's any tax savings because the money goes back to the, it actually doesn't leave the fire department.
So what we are losing then-
Actually, we're going to lose money. Based on the numbers I'm putting together here, we're actually going to lose money.
Okay.
This is getting, this is getting sort of interesting when you start adding in the $58,000 per year.
Okay. Sure. I'm glad you're paying attention to the numbers. But what, we're losing more than the money, and, and guys, you got to stop looking only at the money in this town, because that's not what we elected you to do completely. Yes, we do appreciate that you're fiscally responsible, but we also want you to understand that we value our town and the environment that we have, and that environment includes having somebody that I can go into and, and speak with at dispatch if I have a problem, or call if my family makes a mistake and puts the wrong kinds of chemicals in the pool and I start having a smoke situation in my backyard.
Rock show.
Okay? I, I, I would lose that with what you're proposing. Now, the reason that people are saying they would feel comfortable with having us become a regional dispatch is because it stays in this town. And whoever does come in here, the second person that you would hire, and I have no problem personally hiring a second person, because, you know, the FAA just did it for, you know, our air traffic controllers, so why not have it for dispatch as well? But, um, I lost it, sorry. I just think that it's very important that we keep, oh, that second person will become just as knowledgeable about this town as the first person is. We will never have that with Dairy. Thank you.
And that, one of the, one of the biggest things, to your point, Mary, that, you know, that I've been reading in studies and, and in the growth projection that we're going to see, I mean, we have the potential for petting gill to eventually hopefully develop. We've got Woodmont, which we know to some degree is going to develop, we just don't know how big or what yet. And that's one of the concerns, is that currently as we have this setup, we have one person per shift, and so we do worry about the safety part of it. It's not just about the money like everybody thinks this is, it's not. It's about the safety, and it's like, it's like Tom had asked about, what happens if, if this person becomes incapacitated and doesn't have a chance to call the fight? I mean, call the police department as a backup, you know?
Sean, the same argument could be made for the two guys at Dairy. What if there's a gas leak? They both pass out at the same time. There is no, that's not a valid, valid argument. I mean-
Well, well, actually, Mary, that is a valid argument, because that's the site of the United States Fire Administration, is that's one of the arguments for this.
Okay, I'm just saying, you can have two people do the same thing, Tom. It doesn't matter, you could have five people incapacitated at the same time.
Right, and the odds are a lot more, you know, I, I understand your point, but, you know, if you're going to stick with the science with it, let's stick with the science with it. The odds are li, are less likely to do that. And I guess what I would like to see from somebody, what I haven't seen yet, is one somebody, what I haven't seen yet is one study from a professional firefighters organization or anything that says single is better.
I'm not saying single is better, Tom. I'm saying hire somebody else and keep it here. I wanted this, I wanted you guys to fully fund, not you because you weren't on the council, the Safer Grant so we could have all of those firefighters be hired for our town. It is not acceptable that we only have nine in a shift right now.
It's not. And it should be 10 and it's supposed to be 10.
That's right.
But somebody's got to make the decision to get the money to do that.
And we would have made that decision had it been brought up at town meeting.
Mary, for two years, with all due respect, for two years, this has been a problem.
From the, for the five folks on the council, not for the legislative body. We keep, we keep paying, we keep voting for your budget. All you had to do was keep those guys in the budget and trust me, we would have voted for it. So, you know, I mean, there's other people behind me, Tom, and you and I can go back and forth. I want to give everybody else a chance. But that's my opinion.
Thanks, Mary.
Sir, if you don't mind, if I could share some, share some numbers for a minute, if that'd be okay?
Right ahead.
So I took the outsourcing costs and I added the $58,000 into each year. So over a five-year period, just talking pure revenue, Dairy will take in $1,726,000. If I take the fiscal year 378 number and I increase it by eight percent a year, we would be at $2,028,000. If we charged $58,000 a year for radio boxes, we would be at $1,738,000. So it'd be a difference of, if we outsource it, we'd save $12,000.
Do you know that the $58,000 was in facted into the cost of the contract?
I don't know. I don't, I know that they're going to charge $58,000 and I know we have the ability to do the same.
Okay.
I also happen to know exactly how central stations work since I closed 80 of them down to six. And with regards to dead man backups and everything else, there are things for that. And it is renowned in the industry of dispatch centers to be able to do that. Do you get better service? Some would say, no, you get equal service. You get different service. You get very different service. But there's companies, I mean, Tyco International went from 80 to six. The technology exists and they've been doing it for 15 years. It's not that it can't be done, but they did it and saved millions and millions of dollars. And they changed the way they ran their business. They also grew from a $500 million division to a $10 billion division. Reason for doing it, right? This is, what they're saying here is, I think is a little, is a little bit different. I mean, here's what I'm hearing. What I'm saying, what I'm hearing is, is hey, we may give the same service. All the things you're saying may be right. We may have dead man backup. Maybe one dispatcher's better than two. The real answer to firefighters is two in, two out. I mean, that's what the real answer is. It should be 12 on a shift. Okay? But we're talking about 12 grand.
Frankly, the money is a secondary consideration for me. It's a safety issue. And the money, the money, if there is savings, backfills the overtime.
Okay, we got 12 grand.
Well, maybe, or maybe we have 12 plus 50, 58. Because you don't know it's part of the contract.
Whatever it is. I'm sorry?
Is that accurate, what John's running or?
Yeah, I'll go over and show two.
All right.
If you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
John Gritten, Jewel Court, number 14. I've come up here once before. It's my second time before this body on a fire department issue. I am not a firefighter. I don't work for the town. I've used the services of the police department and the fire department and I'm a grateful taxpayer. And I'm grateful that the town council is looking for solutions to some of our tax burden that we have in town. And that's great. However, this is clearly not a safety issue. This is almost laughable to think this is a safety issue. What a safety issue is, if we're going to take the United States Fire Codes or the NFA standards for two dispatchers, let's look at the standard for an engine company. We've got a...
Why don't we just stay on the dispatcher?
Nope. I don't want to stay on the dispatcher.
Then we're going to rule you out of order because we're talking about a dispatch. We're talking about the dispatch.
Okay, then I'll talk, then I'll talk about dispatch.
I'm not lecturing on anything. Please.
May I speak on dispatch?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the dispatch center, there was a fire recently in town and I listened on one of our town websites to the audio of the Londonderry Fire Dispatchers navigating mutual aid coming in. And I heard a mutual aid tanker, I believe it was, if that's the right terminology, coming from Litchfield and they were going to the wrong address. And the Londonderry dispatcher corrected that pretty quickly. So one of my concerns as a taxpayer is that we are taking a vital service. And somebody up on the council had said that the telecommunications, the dispatchers are not first responders. Well, when they are directing water and they are directing resources to a scene that is as critical as can possibly be, they certainly are, they are first responders. It's disingenuous to say they're not. That's number one. Number two is, when Dairy is navigating engine companies into my house on Jewel Court and those engine companies are going to the wrong address or the wrong end, the individual that works in Dairy may have grown up and conquered, currently lives and hooks it and has no familiarity with this town. So what is the problem with the Londonderry dispatch center? What I'm hearing is a possible savings of $12,000? We could, we could save that in grass seed or don't plow a road extra. This is crazy. So, you know, as much as I don't appreciate getting gavelled when I'm comparing this issue...
I just want to stay on topic.
Well, I will say this to you. The topic is this. You're saying that this is a safety issue by having one dispatcher? And I think, Mr. Chairman, that you opened the door to me as a citizen when you say it's a safety issue to point out a much greater safety issue that we have in this town. But you don't want to hear that tonight. And when you say...
It's a valid concern that this council has also talked about.
Right.
And we also, the past council approved the ability to go for the Safer Grant to address that. We are addressing it, sir. And if the Safer Grant doesn't go through, then I'm sure this council will be looking at that and presenting it to the voters in the next cycle.
Okay.
Okay?
But we cannot say that we are going to drop from our dispatch center. We're not going to, we can't say we're going to give it to Dairy so we can have two dispatchers because there's some fire code or standard or recommendation. Because there are so many fire codes and standards and recommendations that we are not adhering to right now and we're placing our first responders at risk by doing it. And that's my problem. So I won't talk about the engine company and I won't talk about the fire ground that these guys call it, but we can't say it's a standard issue and then not look at the rest of the standard issues that we're in violation of or not making the recommendation of. We can't say that these folks that are in that fire station 24/7 serving our community aren't first responders and aren't public safety providers. We can't say that. And that is, I sit here and I'm new. I had three years in town. Love it. Love it to death. Greatest place in the world. Somebody just said, we're going to save $12,000? You could get that in interest on a bond.
Well, maybe not these days, but...
Maybe not these days. But so, so, so this just, this just does not, when I listen to that tape and such a critical incident, this does not make any sense. Plus, we're going to give it to Dairy. And I will say this about Dairy.
[laughter]
I, I don't, I didn't, you know, I, I don't, listen, I'm not anti-Derry. I grew up in Boston. I'm not anti-Derry, but here's the deal. We are giving our money to another municipality who, the moment they run short, don't kid yourself, the moment they run short, the slickest guy over there is going to look at this contract and find a reason to reopen it. And they're going to come to Londonderry and they're going to want more than apples from us. That's what's going to happen.
[applause]
I think, in closing, because I know I'm getting the watch here, I think it's a bad idea. And I think what we're doing is we're taking people that have made a commitment to this community. I don't, and by the way, I don't know any of these guys. None of them. They've made a commitment to this community. The police and fire have made a commitment to us to protect us. And what we're doing is, we're saying we're going to fire them and we're going to give our cash to Dairy. That's unacceptable and we can't do that. And as a taxpayer and not a town employee, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate what you're trying to do. I applaud you for your efforts. This is misguided and this cannot go through. And that's it.
Thank you.
I feel like I'm in front of a firing squad or something. I'm a little nervous.
No, not really. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Margaret Saw, Four Mountain Home Road, Londonderry. In response to the safety issue, several years ago after the Pirates of the Caribbean midnight showing in town, we were coming back home and we pulled off to the side of the road because there was a car in front of us that had pulled off. We pulled over and there was approximately a 23-year-old child in it. Sorry, I'm 50. That's a kid to me. We pulled over. He wasn't speaking. He was incoherent. He was not with it. We called 911. I had his cell phone. We called 911. And they said, your location, please. And I said, um, we're up the street from Max between this and the fire department, Max Fire Department, please, department, across the street from the cemetery. Where would that be? What's the mile marker? I don't have a mile marker. I'm on Mammoth Road. I'm right up the street from Max and like 50 feet from the fire department. School's up the street. We're all within this radius. You can't miss us. There's four cars pulled over now. Our flashes are on. We can't find it. Well, you need to give us a mile marker. So my husband got on the phone and he's like, look, this is where we are. And he's much better with directions than I am. We were able to identify. At that point, I was more concerned about this child in the car, again, 23 is young to me. I called the local department here and ended up talking to someone at the fire department and he walked me through...
Did you hang up with 911?
Yes, I did. I hung up with 911 and called the local department because I know the fire department here in town. I worked for the school district and they had come and visit. And I, they're just good people that help. Talked to a dispatcher there who happened to be an EMT. Actually, I believe he's a nurse. I believe he's an RN. I don't even know if it was him, to be honest with you. Whoever it was, was just so helpful in us, getting us to him to respond, just to, you know, is he, is he sliding? Is his eye, is his eyes rolling back? Do you have anything cold in your car? Can you, you know, elevate his feet, you know? Does it look like he's going into shock? Or suppose, I just got a phone call and someone can't find Max Apples in my hometown. So it, to me, it does feel like a safety issue. If you call somebody and it's redirected someplace, where do you go for help in your own backyard if you can't go to your community? So to me, it was important to have that community outreach and be able to go, I'm at Max, we'll be right there. And it was the same fire EMT, actually, that came, that came with the fire truck that had done, two weeks ago, had been at Moose Hill School with the children. So it is a community issue. And I know money's an issue. We're all tight for money. No one here in this room probably hasn't heard anything at some point with money. But it is a community issue. It is a safety issue. That child, I feel we made a difference and we helped him that night. We seemed to get more progress out of him before the fire department from, you know, did show up. And they were aware of it. And because he had watched me through and I think he had actually tried to outreach to wherever, it just, it just seemed to make addition. I don't know if we really helped him that much, but I felt like I wasn't alone. I felt like we were able to help. And it was nice to talk to someone in my community who knew where Max Apples was and who was able to help us that night. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Saw, Four Mountain Home Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Thank you for your service and I do not envy you, any of you at all. You're, you're, you're given a difficult balancing act to play. I do want to stress that I am a stakeholder. I'm not a town employee. I'm a taxpayer in town. I raised my family here in town, 22-year resident. I own property here in town. And so I look at myself as a very large stakeholder for the fire department. And in my career, I'm an IT professional and I've outsourced a lot of IT over the past 25 years of my career. You asked for questions and comments, so I did have some questions I'd like to get to first before I get to my comments. Section 21618 specifies that the software license will be transferred for Alpine Software, but in the startup costs, I don't see, it says, I'm sorry, "Secure permission from the CAD vendor and deliver a fully paid license to Dairy from Alpine Software." Many software licenses require, aren't readily transferable except upon, you know, acquisition of a company. Is there a startup cost for that? Have we confirmed with Alpine that there's no transfer cost for that software to go over to Dairy?
You're from Alpine, chief?
Okay. So there may be additional startup costs that aren't included here. $110,000 may not be accurate.
Well, that depends. The question you're asking is, is the software going to be assignable? We're actually still, we're still going to pay for it, so we still own it. We're only letting a third party use it. So the question is, is whether a third party can use it, not whether it's assignable.
Okay. Well, that's correct. If you, so if you ask Microsoft if you can assign your licenses, see what they have to say.
They may say no. Well, Microsoft will definitely say no. Alpine may or may not.
But, but you're, but, but...
They're Microsoft.
But you are, this started with a request to make a decision on this tonight by the council to vote on this and you don't have all the answers yet.
Oh, yeah, you're right about that.
I would suggest that you, I would suggest that that could be a significant cost.
I agree.
Section 2.7, the right to retain dispatch. I guess I just, I scratched my head over that one there because as we read through the rest of this, we're transferring equipment, we're transferring licenses over to Dairy. So I don't quite understand. I mean, I think this is a moot point. How can you maintain dispatch at a reasonable cost if you're transferring all of your resources over to your outsourced agent? So I just want to point that one out. The question came up a little bit earlier about training, staff certification. Have we done a study to see what training and staff certification we have on our dispatch here in Londonderry versus what they have in Dairy? All right, Mr. Karen?
Should I wait on my questions to be read?
Sorry. We were talking. Go ahead.
I can wait. Go ahead.
No, no, no. The, I know one significant difference is that Dairy does not provide EMD, emerging metal dispatch. They rely upon 911 system and our fire department continues to provide that duplicate service of EMD.
Okay, so our staff is more highly trained than the Dairy staff they're outsourcing to.
We provide a higher level of service with respect to EMD. That's correct.
Okay. And is that a safety issue, gentlemen?
Wait, can you say that a little bit louder?
So...
We provide a higher level of service than what we're contracting to. It's interesting.
I guess I would just ask, is that a safety issue? Mr. Green, is that a safety issue? Is dispatch a safety issue then?
It is for me.
I'm sorry. So dispatch is, because earlier you said dispatch was not a safety issue. So dispatch is a safety issue, Mr. Green?
That's not what I said. I said, I, the first responders, we're talking about dispatch versus first responders. You're talking about budgets. That's what we're talking about.
Okay, then perhaps I, perhaps I misheard.
Everybody realizes, everybody realizes there's a shortfall coming from the state. Everybody realizes we're all looking for ways to fund first responders. This is a possible solution. That's what I meant.
Okay. Because the word, the word I wrote down that I heard you say was safety versus dispatch, but perhaps I was wrong. So three questions there and then just a couple of comments. And I'll just relay one other anecdote. I was traveling in Massachusetts on 93. I think some of you commute down to 93. Most of you, if you listen to any traffic report, know there's an exit called Montvale Ave. It's always referred to as Montvale Ave. Right there in Stonem. I was driving home, 11 o'clock at night and I saw an absolutely horrific accident. The car spun out right in front of me, went across four lanes of track. It slammed into the guardrail, bounced off the guardrail, rolled back across the road, hit two other cars as it came across the road, which are traveling at 65 or higher miles an hour. It was a really horrific accident. I pulled over into the high-speed lane and the median strip of the high-speed lane. I called Massachusetts E911 and I said, just witnessed this accident. There's four cars involved. There's obviously people that are hurt, airbags deployed, et cetera, et cetera. Where are you? Montvale Ave exit I-93. Can you give me the mile marker? Swear to God, this is what happened. Montvale Ave exit in Stonem on I-93. Sorry, sir. I need a mile, mile marker or an exit number. I was between the exit ramps on Montvale Ave. I couldn't see what it was. So the knowledge, the local knowledge of the dispatchers can be critically important in saving lives, whether it's a fire, whether it's an accident. Knowing something about the town, as my wife said earlier, Max Apples, there's another example that I had from a few years ago, having the local knowledge is critical. You had a motion earlier this evening about renaming names. Have we looked at street names in Londonderry versus Dairy? Versus Auburn? Versus Wyndham? Versus Chester? Versus Hampstead? But are the dispatchers going to be able to keep things straight? And, because they're under high stress, too. So these are some of the questions I think you need to look at. Statistics are a wonderful thing. 277 towns have a regional dispatch. 98% of the towns in New Hampshire have a regional dispatcher. Which ones are larger than Dairy, than Londonderry in terms of residents served, in terms of businesses served, in terms of square mileage of the town? I know, I heard several people throw out those statistics earlier. Does anyone have the answers to that?
Bedford's one of them. They have 21,000-plus people and they have a combined.
Where is their dispatch?
Bedford Police, I think. Bedford Police.
I'm sorry. So Bedford does their own dispatch. And you're counting that as one of the ones with the regional dispatch?
It is a combined.
Okay. But it's in their town, right? So let me, if you don't mind, Mr. Keith, let me rephrase the question then. Which larger towns than Londonderry in terms of population, businesses served and square mileage use a regional dispatch located outside of their jurisdiction?
I don't know the answer.
Concord uses Capital Area Mutual First Aid. They're a 42,000 population.
Where is that located?
It's in Concord, New Hampshire.
Okay, so that's, that's in Concord. So Concord is their own dispatch. Bedford is their own dispatch. So, gentlemen, if you want to vote on that...
But are you saying that everybody that works at the Capital Area Dispatch is a Concord resident?
No. But I think that, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
Mr. Freeman, what town do you work in?
What town do I work in? Cambridge.
Do you know anything about Cambridge?
I know how to get to where I'm going and...
You know the street? You know, I suggest if there's a traffic, if there's a traffic backup, you may know an alternate route.
Yeah.
Okay. So even though you don't live in town because you work in that town, you have knowledge of Cambridge that somebody from outside the town, from several miles away, because you are a visitor to that town, correct?
I have some knowledge of some areas of Cambridge. Cambridge is a big town.
I perfectly understand. But because, so, so to your question of, does everybody who works in Concord live in Concord? No. But they work in Concord and they're dispatching in Concord. If you have people that work in the town, because, simply because of their matter, they're commuting there, because they're co-location in the town, they're going to have more knowledge of the town. So I think... So, I think that that's a reasonable position to say, having dispatch in your town gives you some, some element that is intangible, but it is a safety element. And I'm sorry, I know you want to keep this moving along.
If I could just comment for just one second. You heard me say earlier, I closed 80 centers and moved them down to six, okay? The service is very different. It's adequate. It's very different. You know? Yes, local versus regional dispatch, there's going to be different levels of service. There are some extremely successful regional dispatch centers in this country. And the technology exists to do it. Whether or not this is a good contract to get or not, I don't know, okay? I haven't been to the Derry Dispatch Center. I got this thing on, I finally got the numbers on Wednesday or Thursday, you know? So, like you, I'm trying to understand. So, I appreciate all your questions. But, you know, but we also have to look at the flip side to it, is there are some good dispatch centers, too.
There absolutely are some good dispatch centers.
And there's some people who are highly trained in medical emergency dispatch. I think, my personal opinion is, a dispatch center comes down to, you can put it on the moon, for all I care, if the people are outstanding, people who are trained, highly trained, and have every technological piece of equipment they need, so they can like use Google Maps to zoom down to my house if they have to.
And yet, Mr. Farrell, we do know this evening that the Derry Dispatch staff is less qualified than the Londonderry staff, right? That's a fact that.
That was stated here tonight. That is correct. And I just learned that tonight.
I know there's other people behind me, so let me just get to two final points.
Sorry, Bob, if you've got questions, just ask.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
The amendment, and I apologize, I went to the website, I printed out the motion, but the amendment wasn't on there. The amendment speaks to staffing full-time fire positions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Full-time fire positions?
I don't think it was up there.
Full-time, no, it's fine. Full-time fire positions?
Filling overtime to fund the 10 per shift.
But that staff is, the staff that would be on engines, correct?
Yes.
So, I would just suggest that earlier when you gavelled down the other citizen who was trying to make the statement and you said it wasn't pertinent to this motion.
I will apologize, I will apologize right now. A little gavel happy, just trying to control things. So, I apologize to the audience for that, so.
I confer, as being a gentleman who sometimes has a gavel and is.
Mea culpa.
Perfectly sympathize with you on that.
Thank you.
My wife and I made a decision 22 years ago where we wanted to live. We looked at the towns, we knew we wanted to settle in this region. We looked at the towns around this region. We certainly looked at the schools, we certainly, police department, the safety records, we looked at the fire departments, tried to understand a little bit about, before we purchased. We made a decision to buy in Londonderry, to become a taxpayer and a citizen of Londonderry because of the intangibles that we saw here in Londonderry, on the surface of it. Litchfield had good schools at the time. Derry had other, you know, things going for it, Sandown, et cetera. But we made a decision to purchase in Londonderry because of the quality of life and because of the quality of services that were being performed. And being able to walk in, and before we bought that house, we did walk into the police sta, the fire department, and we did have a conversation with the staff there. We walked into the police station, had a conversation with the staff there. I would suggest to you that this is a quality of life issue and this is a quality of Londonderry issue that you're making a decision on as well. When I call and it's a matter of, fortunately, it hasn't been my life yet, but when it's a matter of potentially life and death of a citizen in this town, and I call and talk to somebody on the dispatch, I want them to know where Max Apples is. I want them to know where Montville Ave is, if that's in their jurisdiction. That is critical for me. We have plenty of examples of, you know, issues along the way like that. So, it may not be a professional firefighters of America issue or Fire Chiefs National Study. This is, I'm the guy paying my tax bill, and that's the service that I want. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for at least allowing me to ask some questions I'm going to be asking. And I apologize because the questions I'm going to ask are probably going to be firing around a several different.
Can you do me a favor, just name and address?
Yep.
Thanks.
Gene Jastrom, 19, Porch Lane. Also worked for the fire department. First question I have, as it's been brought up before, of how many actual departments dispatch for themselves? Majority of the departments dispatch for themselves in the southern tiers in southern New Hampshire. Out west, southern New Hampshire, the population out there, the demand for service out there is a lot less. What I can think off the top of my head, Town of Londonderry, Derry dispatches for themselves, Salem dispatches for themselves, Hudson dispatches for themselves, City of Nashua and City of Manchester. Do.
Northampton and Seabrook.
Pardon me?
Northampton and Seabrook.
Yes, okay.
Just a couple more, if you.
Do you know how many calls a year the Londonderry Fire Department does? About 3,500 or so.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was about 38.
All right. I've got a representative in back of me from Salem Fire, and I'm going to ask him. You just bet for yourselves. How many calls a year do you, Salem Fire do?
Salem Fire does just over 300 calls.
If he wants to sit down, if you have a question, okay.
Yeah. The only reason as I ask him is because he's there for a resource. Okay?
Just, I want to clarify, if you don't mind, I have data on that. So, it's 1,855 Londonderry for EMS calls, total calls are 3,109. So, you have it. So, I have the data here for all the towns, if you want it.
Yeah, what?
Manchester is an example, just, I mean, a lot bigger than us, is 13,610.
Okay. So, you've got the numbers there. Can you tell me what the Town of Derry does?
Sure.
Okay.
Town of Derry, 4,204, just for Derry.
Okay, okay. Two dispatchers, correct? So, we're talking two dispatchers between Londonderry.
No, no, there's always a minimum of two dispatchers.
Yes.
That means on third shift, there's three dispatchers and there's a battalion commander in case, basically calling the shots to where those calls go and how it gets directed. They have, just for data facts, they have 110. Continue, I'll get you that fact for you.
Well, the question, the question I'm going to bring up is we've got over 3,000 calls, okay? So, I'll go down there, because our past numbers have been close to 3,500. They fluctuate every year. So, a Londonderry call dispatcher accepts at least 3,000 emergency calls a year. Town of Derry dispatcher or dispatchers go for 40, 4,200, 4,000, somewhere around there. Plus, they do the other communities, too. So, what's been brought up before is the fact that, Council of Frieder, you've stated that there was a safety, because you've read through the national standards and recommend that if there's a medical emergency or something along that lines where dispatcher, it's better off to have two there than as opposed to have one.
That's what they said.
Yep, yep, and I don't deny that. All of you do realize that there's redundancy in the system, that if, for some reason, God forbid, we have a dispatcher go down and they're not able to answer the phones, the phones ring twice, then go to a backup dispatcher, which is our, which is Derry. So, the calls get answered. What's going to happen is if one of us are out there and call back on the radio and we don't get any response for dispatch, then things are going to happen. There's probably going to be a response back to fire alarm to find out what's going on. So, the well-being of that individual is, might be delayed, but it's going to be taken care of. The next point I have, Central Station was built back in 1978. It's been staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week for the past 33 years. If we go and have a dispatch center take the calls over in Derry, that means we no longer have that building staffed 24/7. We haven't missed one minute in the 33 years in that building. There's always been somebody there. The numbers have gone up. We all can see the call volume going up. There's more times when the manpower goes out of Central, because the ambulances run out of Central, and manpower runs out of Central, and there will not be anybody there to staff that station. Now, that's a major change for this community. I'm not even going to talk to businesses, because the businesses have ultimately always come in and they always accepted that we were open 24/7, and there was always a body there. That's going to change. That's a major safety issue for all the people in Londonderry. That's a major point when people say, "I'd like to bring the regional dispatch to Londonderry," because guess what? I guarantee I got a body there 24/7. That's a big plus. Two, the numbers that I've seen have been 345, $350,000, was it to run our fire alarm?
$378,555.
No, I'm going to ask you because you've got all the numbers there. So, what are we, what are we paying for the first year? We're paying startup costs as $110,000.
According to the memo I have in front of me, the outsourcing cost for the first year would be $345,800 plus the $58,000 that Derry would get for monitoring the boxes for a total of $403,000.
Now, if, if we, if we looked at that, so we're looking at over $400,000 a year.
Well, keep in mind, the council would have to come up with a resolution to decide the charge for those radio boxes. And I'm all for every piece of revenue we can get.
And that goes along with your point two weeks ago when you said that was one of your goals, that you wanted to increase revenue into the town.
Well, I want us to explore every possible revenue opportunity that there is.
And I understand that, and you know?
Because I don't want us to segregate services.
And I understand that. So, the thing here is, we had the Town of Derry provide ambulance service back up until 1996. And the numbers we were paying were $250,000 a year to provide the service, plus they got the bill on top of that. A bunch of people got together and said, "Hey, guess what? The numbers look good, why don't we start our own service?" So, we broke away from Derry. Now, I see this contract is over the next five years, and I've heard that, well, you know what? If things don't work out over the first year or so, then they could increase the numbers, and they would have to be negotiated. And the next thing you know is the dispatcher sent by might be coming back. So, what have I spent? I spent $110,000 to move everything over there? I'm going to be generous and say it's going to be at least $50,000 to move everything back, because you're going to have the same people, technicians, bring everything back over. So, there's almost a double cost to that. The other problem I have is now we're going after our businesses. I think we need to keep the revenue in town. I've heard tonight that we're balanced around between financial, in between safety, and I could sit here all night and I could, I could answer the questions that you guys are going to say, financial and safety and the whole nine yards. The reason some departments have their own dispatching is because the amount of people there. What you don't understand is a lot of the departments that are combination with the police and fire, they envy Londonderry. I don't know if you guys listening out there in the scanner world or, there is a distinct difference between the Town of Londonderry, the Town of Derry, the dispatch center up in Concord. We get complimented because the interaction between me as a fire officer, when I get on scene and I ask for help, fire alarm is like that. Because their sole responsibility at that point is to monitor that radio for me, for the community, monitor the telephones. Unfortunately, when Derry, they've got to monitor several communities. They have two people, but they've got to monitor several communities. The captain was up here earlier and mentioned the fire we had a couple of weeks ago. What I would ask you people to do is take the radio transmission tapes and document all the stuff that was done between the two comm centers, put them together and see what happened. They overlapped. Jerry was out there making phone calls, making sure that the resources got there. He had capacity in the system. That's the big thing. There's capacity in this system. Back several years ago when Multinborough's, the mills burnt down there in Methuen. Salem, and correct me if I'm wrong, Salem had a backup Methuen. Salem became a staging area. Town of Derry turned around on their own, called down to Salem and said, "Hey, we know you're buried. What can we do to help?" They branched out. That's a safe, that's two comm centers now doing different aspects and have capacity. What you people don't realize also is that we're a backup for the Town of Litchfield, and it's happened several times already. And I could have had Chief Schofield come here tonight and he could have talked your ear off exactly how he loves this place and the fact that his dispatch center over in Hudson went down for radio communications. He picked up the phone, talked to the captain over here and said, "I need help." You know what? You got it. You're already in our council. It used to be a couple of times a week, and I'm not sure if he still does it or not, and there's an individual back there, Bruce can back this up. He would call to his dispatch, regional dispatch, Hudson, and sometimes they wouldn't hear him. Or they were doing something else. They wouldn't acknowledge him. He always, he picked up the phone, called the radio and called us on his channel. And you know how many times Londonderry answered? Every time. We dispatched for Litchfield back 25 years or so ago. The two dispatches, the two towns were together for dispatching. So, the revenue's there to turn around and bring another town in. If you want to, you want to offset things for revenue, I think there's revenue out there to get. What does it benefit for the community? I've got a body in Central, 24/7. I'm not going to get it over there. How much money am I going to turn around? And as a taxpayer, I don't like the fact that I'm going to have potentially $400,000 go over there potentially every year. I have an issue with that. The other issue I have is I got online the other night and decided to look at Derry's budget. I read a memo from their town manager back in March 31st of this year and stated that they were taking over dispatching for Londonderry Fire, and they already put it in their budget. That I found kind of weird, too, because they were turning around and they got a shortfall. So, they need some revenue in, too, to try to justify to keep their numbers, too. Okay? What I'm basically saying here is there's capacity in the system. God forbid something happens up at the airport. We all know if there's a plane that goes down, it's not necessarily in the airport, it's an approach. Well, guess what? It's either in Londonderry or Manchester. Manchester's already had one go down several years ago in the parking lot of Walmart. Do we understand what exactly the SOPs are when the plane goes down for Londonderry? Yes, we have procedures in place. What are they in place? We turn around, we dispatch for us, we branch out to Derry. Derry takes a bit. Rockingham County takes a little bit. Concord takes a little bit. 911 turns around, takes a bit. Now, I'll talk to you about 911. My wife is a call taker, and was one of the first call takers of 911. And she comes home with horror stories all the time. This dispatch, that dispatch. Not one time has she said that she has been treated rudely, out of disrespect at all, when they've called Londonderry. And I would say, go up there and ask up there, how many complaints have been lodged against Londonderry? There haven't. These guys are going to turn around and answer the phone, and they're going to give you 110%. If they have a medical problem, they understand what's going to happen. I'm going to be there to try to back them up. If I don't get them on the radio, then it's, nothing turns around and starts me jumping my engine and coming code three up here and finding what's going on while I'm on the phone calling the PD and saying, get somebody over there because fire alarm's not answering me. While that's being taken care of, the citizens in town are being taken care of because the calls are automatically being transferred over to Derry. Derry goes down, they have the power to turn around, they can transfer them over to Hudson. Hudson goes down, they can go to Nashua, they can go to Manchester. There's a lot of capacity in here. If it's $12,000, we're looking at potentially for five years. What I'm going to ask you is how many hours in that five years? And divide that out, and how much you actually paying that dispatcher to sit there in that chair? It's got to be pennies. Now turn around and break it out, and how much is it going to be for $300,000 a house? That's all I have to say, folks. I'm real passionate about this because I'm the guy on the other end of the, the radio calling back to fire alarm, and I get them every time. And if I don't get them in the first time, I know they're probably on the phone, and I can tell whether, what kind of call I have, because we work close together and I can hear it in their voice. And they don't have a problem. If they stumble, they have a question, they don't have a problem picking up the radio and saying, engine two, I got another call, it, it happened, it actually happened this morning. We had a motor vehicle accident down the south part of town. A medical came in on 93. Betsy was on, I believe. She called back and asked if we were going to be ready to, if we were going to be able to clear and take that call. Some things went on, we weren't exactly ready to, to clear, just about getting ready to pick up the microphone, she turns around, sends the north end down. She has the capacity, she knows exactly what this town's like. If I go to, if I go to any dispatcher, I go to a police department and say, hey, I got a motor vehicle accident down on the old goat farm, how many people here are actually going to know where the old goat farm is? South Road, okay? That backs up what the gentleman was just up here on. They know this town inside and out. So there, there's a lot here, and I applaud you with the numbers, I really do. But the problem I have, and maybe it's a pet peeve of mine, is the town always has to try to balance the budget. The schools just keep going. And Councilor Dolan, you said it two weeks ago, maybe we might have come up to the line, maybe we need to rethink some things? Maybe we do. So that's all I'm asking you tonight. Look at the large picture. The studies are out there, and I'm not going to dispute them, but there's safeties in place to back up the community. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to say my dispatcher isn't important, but if I can have a dispatcher there 24/7, I'm, I'm protecting a population of 23, 24, 25,000. If the dispatcher has a medical emergency, that's one person, and I can turn around and try to manipulate that, try to get a truck up there, or try to do something for that one person. Okay? I just, I don't know how, any other way to say it. I really, I really don't. Councilor Green, you made the statement, you know, there's a difference, there's apples and oranges between the, the guys on the street and dispatcher. Don't take this wrong. Sir, if I don't get that phone call and I don't get told where to go, that guy ain't getting to the call. It doesn't make a difference how many we have.
So you're saying that the people that are in the same union you're in that, that actually work for Derry are not going to be able to do that job?
I am telling you, the points that I brought up, I am telling you, financially, I can't see where it is.
I'm just asking a question, I'm just asking a question. Your brothers that are in Derry right now, you're sitting there saying that they can't do the same job that the people in London Dairy are doing.
Actually, you know what? You just found out earlier they can't, because they can, they can't do EMD, and my dispatchers can. That's a level of service that they can't provide over there. They can't turn around, they can't tailor the service to you over in Derry, because they have no idea, and I don't expect them to. Mutual aid, we, we try our best to get to Derry, get to the scene in mutual aid. Sometimes we get lost, sometimes Derry gets lost with us. Why? Because they know Derry and we know London Dairy. And that's what I'm trying to say. There is a lot out there to look at, and it's just, sometimes the numbers just aren't there. So.
Good evening. Paul Leishner, Three Shade Lane, London Dairy. I am not an employee of town, although I think that employees of town still have a right to voice their opinion. I do not work in London Dairy.
Could you speak up loud and just hide the keys?
Sure.
Thank you.
Paul Leishner, Three Shade Lane. As I said, I don't work in town, although I still think that employees that work in town have a right and have an opinion. I think that sending our dispatch to Derry Fire is a huge mistake. I think that everybody before me spoke very well, had some excellent points, and I won't beat those to death. They certainly did a much better job at speaking than I could to those. But as a taxpayer, I think that Derry Fire is obviously doing this to increase their revenue, and I can't understand why the town council would even consider using our tax dollars to supplement Derry's fiscal issues. Makes no sense at all to me. As we heard already, it's nickels and dimes. If we look at the cost of running this entire town, the savings, possible savings, it's nickels and dimes. It's not only what you get, it's the value of what you get. I just look in this room right here that we have, is this the cheapest room that we could possibly build for the town council to meet? I don't think so. But we got value out of it, it's nice. So value, not just the actual nickel and dime that we're spending. When I call 911, that call comes down through E911, comes into London Dairy, and there's always a backup to that system. Safety, that you mentioned before, is not a valid point, because it's not simply receiving a call and dumping it into space. When that call gets sent down, somebody has to pick it up. If it doesn't get picked up, it gets sent automatically to the next ring down. If that call doesn't go anywhere, there's a backup to that. They're finding out what's going on and why there isn't a response. So there are larger communities with single dispatchers that do an excellent job at that, and I don't think it's a valid point if Derry has more than one dispatcher. When I call that.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay. If, if you do the studying, the way I've done the studying over the past two weeks, you'll find several, and I mean several, occasions, and all around the world, okay? In the United States especially, where when they have a single dispatch, there have been fatal fires, there have been accidents that haven't got, responded to properly, there's many, many, many instances of these. We haven't seen one where there's a better situation for a single dispatch. That's my concern. My concern as a counselor, okay, is the safety of London Dairy. That is my concern, okay? And I see this as a safety issue, and I see this as a budgetary issue. Whether you guys like it or not, there, money's not coming to London Dairy, okay? We have to make some tough choices. I don't want to make, I don't want to make choices for the first responders. We have to look at every avenue to try to fund the firefighters, the people that actually go to those fires that run into the building, okay? So we are trying to figure out a way to do that, okay? And my experience has always been to try and look out of the box, okay? And this is something that we haven't done. 98% of, of New Hampshire has, and it's worked very well. We don't, you don't see people running around with their, with their hair on fire, use the expression, screaming that this doesn't work. It's, it's proven to work because 98% of the communities do it. There's a cost savings involved, and that cost savings, if you look, if you listen to the resolution, we added this, and this is an extremely important part of it. The money realized from this agreement is to increase the expenditure for the fire emergency personnel. I have, I'm not sure what Councilor Farrell just calculated, but what I have in my, my hand is over $500,000 savings over five years that's going to get reallocated to the fire department, okay? So I'm not sure about those numbers. All I know is when I walked in here today, there's a $500,000 improvement to the first responders going into the fires, and that's what's important to me, and that's what's important to most of London Dairy, okay? So that's what I'm trying to make the decision on. I'm trying to say, how do I get more firefighters into those buildings? That's what I'm trying to figure out. I wasn't up here to cut the budget, so.
Well, I'd like to be privy to some of those numbers, and I came up with a half million dollars, this is going to save by Derry Fire making a profit by dispatching for London Dairy. As I said, that I think its value is just as important as the nickels and dimes.
And just clarification, okay? The balance that we save is $460,000. If we charge for the radio boxes like Derry does, the balance we save according to this memo is $170,000. Over five years.
So $100,000 over five years seems different than a half a million dollars to me, but... I wonder why, why do we have radio boxes providing a monitoring service for businesses for profit without charging them? I have an alarm system in my home, and I pay for that monitoring fee. Why would we allow a business in London Dairy to make a profit and we provide them with a free monitoring service for our fire alarm system? Why, why are we doing that?
It's been proposed in front of the council before, not while I've been, not in the last year and a half, but it's been proposed in front of the council before, and the council's decision at that time was, was to not charge them and provide it as a service as their, as taxpayers. That's my understanding, is that right, Dave?
Dave, do we have the data points of how many, sorry to put you on the spot, does anybody have the data point as to how many calls we actually have that would, would generate that, or how many of the people that we have in London Dairy that, businesses that would actually generate that? Is this number actually accurate?
Rough number's about 200 call boxes at $300, so it's 60,000, it's 57,000, so it's right around 60. Another interesting number might be to see exactly what the value of those businesses are, what the income of those businesses are, what's the value of the property that London Dairy Fire Department is protecting for free for these businesses at a profit, which I find very interesting, and be my suggestion, that'd be one avenue to get some revenue. So I talked about value. I want value, I want a dispatcher from London Dairy. When I call London Dairy Fire and I have a problem, I want that dispatcher to be intimately familiar with my community. When my family calls, like it's happened before, and they have a medical emergency, I want that dispatcher on the other end to be EMD qualified, emergency medical dispatch qualified. I want them to give my wife directions on how to help my son at the scene of an emergency. And to have us send a dispatch center to another community that can't do that, just doesn't make any sense to me. That is a safety issue. Safety issue to the taxpayers and to the residents of this community. How can we tell them that that's not important anymore? We're just going to give you to another community that can't do that. I don't understand that. So we're going to give them a revenue, source a revenue to another community, we're going to have less or a lower level of service. I just don't understand it. So I urge you as a taxpayer, a resident of this community, that it's important. A quality of service, I think, is critical. The safety and the security and the education of this community is biggest things that make this such a strong community, and to chip away at the fire department, I think it's the wrong thing to do.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Young, I live at 8 King George Drive, and I'm also an employee of the fire department. I have a couple of questions, I don't know if you can answer them or not. What are the other towns that use Derry as a dispatch center? What do they pay to the Town of Derry?
I don't have that information, I do not know.
Okay, and what are those towns' call volumes? Just in comparison.
What was the question again?
The call volumes of these towns, how many runs are they, they doing?
Well, we have Derry, Auburn, Chester, Hampstead, and Wyndham, and there's approximately 101, 265,000 population, and I don't have the numbers as far as the calls go. I might have individually, and I'll have to just add those up, okay? Let me take a look at that. Go on to your next question, I'll try to...
The only reason I'm asking these questions is, if, if we are going to go through this, which as, let me be straightforward, is I don't approve of this, and I'll tell you why in a minute, is that I want to make sure that we're going to be charged an equitable amount to these other towns, and if these other towns aren't going to be charged more for services that we're going to be demanding from Derry. The reason why I don't like this is I've worked in systems with regional dispatches, and I've worked in systems with, with non-regional dispatches. I've worked in Southwest, which was referenced earlier. Southwest Fire has one career department that is responsible for, and 48 volunteer departments, and they run three dispatchers during the day and I believe two after 11. Lakes Region being the next busiest, has three dispatchers on all the time, and they have a lot more towns than Derry ever will. I'm concerned because a lot of those towns are volunteer, and it works for them because they're not nearly as busy as Town of London Dairy is, they don't have the population centers that London Dairy has. So I want to make sure that the citizens are protected as much as possible. I don't want my tax dollars going to the Town of Derry. I don't feel that's right. I don't feel like I should be paying my tax dollars to another town. I just don't feel like that's responsible. If our dispatch center is underfunded, then we need to appropriately fund our dispatch center, whether that's increased staffing during busy hours, I'm not sure, I'm not in a position to make those kind of decisions. Working in those regional dispatch systems, you don't get the attention that you do in London Dairy. If I have an issue, I can call on the radio and somebody answers right away. If I'm working in a regional system and they're working three, four, five, maybe six other calls, I'm going to have to wait in line for someone to answer me. And to me, that's unacceptable. If I need help, I need help now, and I don't want to have to wait for help, whether it's for me, whether it's for one of my coworkers, or whether it's for a citizen, it's just unacceptable. So I don't want to wait for help. And these systems, whether they're big or small, they may work for some people, they may not work for others, I don't believe that they're going to work for the Town of London Dairy. And just on another side note, from, in the Hemlock Street Fire, from the time of dispatch to the time of under control, there was 472 radio transmissions that those dispatches were responsible for, be they outgoing messages, incoming messages, or just monitoring the people that were on the fire ground. Just in case there was an emergency that command didn't capture, that dispatcher was there to listen to it. I'm not saying that Derry can't do the job, I'm not saying that Derry won't be able to do the job as well as London Dairy. I'm just saying that London Dairy does a great job now, it's not broke, we don't need to fix it.
My name is Cindy McKeon, 28 Bancroft Road. I've been a resident of London Dairy for almost 36 years. Been a town employee and dispatch supervisor for the police department for the last 23 years as supervisor, almost 26 as a town employee. Almost 16 years ago, the Budget Committee at that time requested that we look at combining dispatch centers. I met with the Budget Committee at the request of the Chief of Police. I brought along with me a bunch of studies that talked about it. I am not now, and I never have been, against combining dispatch centers. I am against combining dispatch centers with too much speed and in an ill-advised manner. When you're looking at combining dispatch centers purely for a financial, a short-term financial gain, and you don't look at all of the intricacies of combining those dispatch centers, the chain of command, the span of control, everything else, all right? You are dooming that combination to failure. You've all talked about how many communities in this state have combined dispatch centers. How many of them did it in less than six, in, in less than a year? How many of them combined dispatch centers from the time the thought first came out, and implementation being six months later? Okay? In most cases, they do a study that takes at least a year or two. People sit down at a table, there's a committee, they decide who's going to have control. In your proposed contract here, it says there'll be a committee where the towns that contribute the financial resources to Derry, all right? Will have a chance to give their input, but they have no control, because Section 5.3 of the contract says, "The Town of Derry Fire Chief shall have the responsibility for managing and operating and shall have complete control over the emergency dispatch services and personnel," all right? 36 years I've lived in this town. I lived in this town when we didn't have a high school, when our children went to Pinkerton Academy. This community wanted control of its own services. This community voted to have its own high school and establish its own school committee. I have seen members, sitting members, some of them on this board, who have opined the fact that London Dairy lost a great opportunity when the majority of control for Manchester Airport went to Manchester, okay? You were talking about taking control for your dispatch services, and you can call them first responders or not, they're the first people that people talk to on the phone, okay? They're the people, the firefighters, the people that are running in rely on for information. You're talking about taking control for their supervision, for their training, everything, and giving it to somebody else, giving it to Derry, a town that we didn't want to control our school system. I think you need to establish a committee, you need input from the members of the public, and you need to consider this over a year or two, and actually plan this if you plan on going forward with it. You cannot implement it in any kind of good faith or good conscience, all right? It's a disaster waiting to happen if you try to do it the way you're trying to do it.
Thanks, Cindy.
I'm going to be real quick, sorry.
Keith, I'm going to let Steve go before you because you, you've already been up. Okay, go ahead.
I'm just going to be real brief, I wanted to bring up two points. London Dairy Fire also dispatches the Alert Team. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the Alert Team, but we invest hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours every year training on a volunteer status to help with emergency shelters, road closures, road cleaning, searches for lost children. As a board member, not anymore, but as a, as a board member, we spent hours and hours and hours developing an SOP with the fire department so that when, when we were needed, they knew how to get a hold of us. There is a call tree, a process in place, they know how to get a hold of us. That's gone, as soon as, as soon as it's gone. That's one. That's it.
Thanks, Keith.
Steve Young, 7 Fiddler's Ridge Road. And thank you all for sitting there, particularly as it gets later in the evening. I too think that there are a number of things to consider, that we don't have all of the facts. One of the numbers that was quoted tonight was that Derry is handling 265,000 people. And just counting on my fingers, there's just no way that it could be that number of people in the towns that you guys listed out there. And I think it would be important to know how much each of those towns is paying them so we can find out if we did get a competitive bid or not.
See, that's 101,000, 265.
Okay. The other item that's been brought up quite a bit tonight is safety and dispatch. There seems to be a lot of concern about a dead man's switch or the fact that we only have one person over in that dispatch center. Well, if that's true, what's the difference between the fire department and the police department? Because our London Derry Police Department runs dispatch somewhere, I believe, between 85 and 90 percent of the day with just one person over in dispatch. So, I'm confused with why it's an issue of safety in the fire department, but it's not an issue of safety in the police department. I think we should take a look at that. The other item, I'll tell you the truth, I would love to pick on Derry, but chances are, they're going to get to see this video, so... And our football team has enough of a problem with the pink. So, what I'd like to say in that area is I think we need to consider the value of the Derry dollar. We have a situation where London Derry is Canada and Derry is the United States. And what I mean by that is the power of the dollar in London Derry is much greater. The tax rate in Derry is pretty much unreasonable. So, what do we get for our dollar over there? The other item is their developable land. They're already looking at redeveloping land because they've run out of land that they can develop. So, we do know that we have a considerable amount of acreage here in town and a lot of growth that can occur in this town. And I just think it's not prudent to take a little bit more time to review this. Also, it seems there's an amendment that's on the floor tonight, but we didn't hear about that amendment on the floor. And it just makes it curious how we have an amendment when we didn't have a meeting. Thank you.
Dave, can you answer that last question, please?
Well, if the council wants to adopt the amended resolution, you'd have to make an amendment to the original resolution.
Hi, Ian.
Anne Gaffney, 28 Tokenell Drive. I've been listening a lot today and didn't come here knowing very much. As you know, I've waited a while to speak. I tend to be up here pretty soon, otherwise. One thing that I'm hearing over and over again is 98 percent of the towns in London Derry have a regional call center, so we should do it too. New Hampshire, excuse me. Whole lot of towns have regional school districts also. And yet, we don't think they're a good idea. And there's plenty of quantitative research and studies explaining why. And a lot of the reasons behind that are not dollar reasons. They're reasons that have to do with what we've been calling quality of life. So, the parallel here is the quality of life issues. It's the same arguments that we use when we talk about school resource officers. And I know I'm alluding to the schools a lot, but it's what I know best. So, they're my sort of parallels. When you know the people that you are working with, you get better service all around. You are able to give better service because you know who you are going to help. We can't lose that here just because everybody else has. So, because they've given that up for their town, doesn't mean we should make the same If we want to do a regional call center, fine, let's start our own because I'm happy to have it here in my town. And if somebody else wants to give up those things and they're stupid enough to do it, like, let's let them. But don't let us do it. Thanks.
Thanks, Ian.
Hi, I'm Lisa Widmore from 40 Griffin Road. I've served for the last year as a member of your Budget Committee. And I give props to all of you and respect you for the job that you're trying to do to fulfill the objectives of the London Derry taxpayers and voters. I do have to say that I've spent five months in and out of this room at budget presentations, budget workshops, at our last town meeting. And I've heard many, many questions come forward about the solution for the dispatch situation and whether or not there was something that we could consider as a community. And I have to tell you, I am very upset that this is the first time that any of those questions were responded to with the answer, "Oh, we're going to go over to Derry." I really am not comfortable with the fact that people have come into this room and asked questions during the budget process, that a question actually was raised at our town meeting regarding the dispatch center. Nothing was said at that time about going in with Derry. And I just feel this town council has a responsibility to the people who elected you. You have a responsibility to listen to the voters who've taken the time to come here and tell you what they think about this proposal. I understand it came from a good place. I don't believe its ideology. I believe you're genuinely committed to giving the taxpayers and citizens of this community the best solution you can find. What I'm hearing tonight is the best solution you can find is not this one. Or if it is this one, it needs to go under study and it needs to be much more thoroughly examined than it has been to this point. So, again, I respect what all of you are doing, but I sincerely hope you listen to the people who are here, you reach out to the people who still aren't tuned into this yet, and give them an opportunity to become involved and to tell you what they think about this because this is a very serious issue for our community. It's going to cost us a lot of money to back out of this if we make a misstep. So, let's take that first step very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Hold on, folks. Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the council.
So, I wanted to get a litmus test right now. I mean, as a chair, there are a lot of questions with us. So...
Mr. Chairman?
And Dave, I don't mean any disrespect by this, but, you know, I had done a lot of my own research going forward today. And what I heard today was a lot of questions that I'm not sure I got the answers from. And I'll tell you, I'm starting to feel like the guy at the car dealer when, I got to go back to my manager kind of questions, you know? I got the deal here, you got to take it, but you got to take it now.
I got a trash deal for you.
I think I would like some answers to these questions because, you know, I guess I'll put it this way, you know? When I was a young public defender, I tried a case, and the prosecutor put in his case, and I didn't even object yet. And it was my turn, and the judge said, "Well, he's guilty." And that's it. You know? I think the other side of the argument has to be heard. I've heard the questions here. I'm not saying what I'm going to do, but I think I'd like some answers to some of these questions. I frankly didn't know that the people that we have here have a higher level of training than what Derry has.
That's you.
Well, it may be, it may not be. I want to know what the effect is. I want to know some of the answers to the contract questions. I don't feel like, you know, subsidizing other towns because we may have more money than them. If we're paying a unit cost that's equal, you know, then that's what it is. I would like a definite answer on the call box issue. You know, sure, the money's going to Derry, but does that mean we're off, does that mean we're getting a lower cost in the contract? So, I think people here have raised legitimate concerns about the issue. And frankly, I think they're entitled to answers before we do a major change on things like this. So, that's just my two cents. I would be interested in continuing this until we got some answers. And you said at the beginning, we can do this without, if we decide to go forward at a later date, it's not going to affect anything. You owe the contract, we'd just be prorated. So, if that's the case, I would like to move to continue this hearing until, I don't know, when do you guys think?
Well, you can do a couple of things. You can either, as a single counselor, you can move it to the next meeting. You can get a second, and we can move it out until whenever, until we get our answers. You know, those are pretty much your choices. I don't know if Tom has any questions either.
I'll tell you, one thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to see what we're going to buy into.
Interestingly, I mean...
If we do buy into it.
I think the number I heard tossed around was is, we'll be like, we'll be like 40 percent of the cost of what it will cost them to run their center because, like, they've got 60,000 or so people in, and what we bring in will be like 40 percent of the, you know, of the cost is what I heard. And then, you know, whatever Derry pays, then Hampstead, Wyndham, Auburn, you know, but they'll pay by...
I'd just like to see what Derry looks like and how it operates.
Well, the funny part about it is, I think what we're, what we're talking about, here's the question I find really curious after doing this multiple times. We're going to take all of our equipment and put it over there. Are they going to use our equipment and throw theirs away?
Well, they're using the same software, so I imagine it's fairly compatible.
So, I would say, I'd say we just, we just did them a really big favor.
Maybe.
You know, maybe we got to go for a little tour.
Yeah. I mean, if they're using Windows 95, yeah, we get a problem.
Tom wants to go next. If he had a question, a couple of questions.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had also been accumulating some questions that I think we should create a list for to go off and answer. I also had, I think, three points I wanted to make to try to hopefully frame the debate. Some of the questions that I've jotted down is fundamentally, why does Derry host regional dispatch? And then, and the follow-on question is, why don't we? The town, as was correctly pointed out earlier, I think by former Counselor Brown, the town manager was asked to bring forth options to us. It's good to have options, but I think I'd like to have more options. One of the other questions that I jotted down is, we built a cell tower kind of in the backyard over here a few years ago with an agreement that the cell tower provider would host communications antennas for us, for the town. If we no longer need those antennas for dispatch reasons or some portion of them, does that, the question is, does that have any impact on the agreement we have with the cell company and, which could negatively impact the approximately $20,000 of revenue we receive from that company? And just a kind of a consequential question is, who will burn permits going forward if the dispatch is gone? There is, and one other, one other comment that I had, there's been a lot of talk about the concept of a single dispatcher and a potential safety problem that might, that might pose. And I think back, let's go back 15 years, and let's say we've had an, over those 15 years, we've, we're somewhat north of 40,000 dispatch calls in 15 years. How many of those 40,000 calls were substandard due to a single dispatch in place? And if the answer is none, which I think that's the answer, then I think that that issue is somewhat of a red herring. Not to say that we shouldn't add a second dispatcher, but I don't think that rises to the threshold of making a change in our safety calculations based on a sample of 40, 40,000 or more phone calls in 15 years and having zero defects. The council took, of the three points I wanted to make to frame the debate, the council took a very difficult budget to the legislative body at town meeting this past spring. I will tell you, as one member of the five-person body, it was very difficult to get that budget to the financial place that we did, along with the help from the Budget Committee. But I will say that I listened, and the legislative body spoke to us at town meeting. And they told us that cutting deeper into public safety elements was no longer tolerable by the legislative body, and they started putting those elements back into the budget. So, I'd like to, I think someone mentioned earlier in testimony that we've kind of hit the line with regard to public safety. And I think for us to move forward with additional changes at this point, and this is a major change to public safety, that that would represent a certain element of tone deafness on our part. We had a, what I'll call a public safety inflection point in our community recently with the tragic fire on Hemlock. In the past, we've talked about theoretical standards for staffing and so forth, and now we have a chance to look at reality on public safety. What I would like to see, and I've made this known to my fellow counselors, is I would like to see a soup-to-nuts review of what happened that day, starting with the dispatch call, all the way through till body recovery. Until that's done, I think it's irresponsible for us to move forward with this. And lastly, my third point is that this should be a debate about public safety infrastructure. And not so much a cost analysis because I think the cost change over five years is so small in the rather large budget that we deal with. I think it's more about infrastructure philosophy. Is fire dispatch a core competency that we want to retain in the community? That's the issue. Or should we outsource it to another community? That's how I'd like to frame the debate. And that's, that's my comment.
Tom, we've heard. Joe?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to everybody, thank you for coming out tonight. You raised a lot of good questions. A lot of the study that I did kind of proved that this was more of a safety issue for me, and that's really what I was being sold on with the documents that I have in front of me, that it actually was safer for the town of London Derry to go to a multiple-person dispatch. So, trying to make that decision to make London Derry a safer place and with cost savings included, as you can imagine, as a counselor, it's a pretty tasty morsel to jump in. But there's some unanswered questions that we absolutely have to get answered, as well as the study, I think, that we're waiting on that could shed some light into exactly what happened. Did that call center, because of the language, some of you guys may not know, but there's language differences between call centers as well. One of the things that I've also read is that having the centralized calling center helps with that when you're doing mutual aid issues. So, and we do a lot of mutual aid. So, that was another reason why it made sense to do it. But again, until we have those facts, I think it's premature, and I'm not, I don't feel comfortable at all making a decision tonight. And I'd like to move this to a later date.
First, I'd like to apologize for the coughing fits. I made it through the winter without being sick, and apparently the joke's on me. So, a lot of compelling arguments for and against stuff that we've read, stuff that we've heard from. And then, when you have a room full of citizens that, you know, come in and express their opinions on how things should be, it certainly does weigh on your faculties to move forward. At this point, I have a lot more questions than answers that I'd like to see answered before I'm comfortable voting on anything. So, at this point, I'd like to make, take a motion.
So, are we looking to table this indefinitely, or what are we looking to do?
I'd like to make a motion to move this question, this resolution, to at least June 6th, possibly June 12th.
Well, I'd...
Give it enough time to get the report, Doc, etc.
I'd ask you to amend your motion to table it because we don't know how long this study is going to take from the fire department if we want to go down the path of understanding all the facts.
Well, then, can I make a suggestion? Why don't we move it to June 20th, and if it isn't out by the meeting on the 6th, we can push it out further?
Is Captain Rogers still in the room?
Yes.
How long is, how long is it gonna take?
Hey, Captain, could you, can you come on up? Thank you.
This guy's in the room, might as well get an answer.
Yeah.
So it's kind of tough to, to give you a good idea. I, I would say at least another two months, you know, only because we're, we work, shift work, and it's tough to get everybody together. What we did was afterwards, when a, when a situation happens like this, right away, right afterwards, is what they call post-incident analysis. We have everybody that was there, and then you kind of look at, you know, all your strengths, all your weaknesses, you put it together, and then the post-incident after-action report will come out with, you know, summary, an observation, an issue, and then a recommendation is usually the way that report works. So that way, you're taking all the issues that happened, you're trying to look at what Mr. Dolan exactly said. You know, you look at the, the positive things that happened, it worked well, you looked at the things that were, could have worked better, and then, but there has to be a recommendation to get you where you need to be on that. So I would say another, you know, probably at least, at least another month and a half would probably give you a, a solid timeframe. We could keep you abreast, though, you know, through Chief McCaffrey, Chief McCaffrey letting the town manager know the progress that we're making and, and come up with a deadline.
So can we be ready by June twentieth?
If, if you need it done by then, we can have it done by then.
We need it done before then, so we can study it.
Right.
Just as a point of information, this is something that I, I learned very recently. Helped me understand that in a fire like the one we saw, it's a, life safety is a matter of seconds. Can you help educate us as to, as to at what rate do those types of fires double? How many seconds it takes for them to double in size?
I, I can tell you exactly. NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, says that a fire will double in size every ninety seconds. And, Mr. Dolan, I gotta tell you, I've been on the fire department twenty-one years, been to a lot of fires. When I arrived at that scene that night, I was very surprised, because it came in as a, a fire in the back, in the rear porch of the house. And then we were updated as we were on scene and rolling, and as we were updated from a neighbor saying that it is a house fire. That was, that was the second update, the structure is on fire. Right away, we went to, we have different mechanisms that we go through, and right away, I, I'd call, I thought I called for a lot of, very aggressively called for a lot of resources that night before I even got there, but when I made the corner, it was something that, twenty-one years of service, and I gotta tell you, I'd never been put in that situation where myself and my guys could not get in a house. That's the first time it ever happened, and the guys that worked for me are incredible. They're young, they're aggressive, and that was, it was very challenging.
Thank you. Does, does that report have to get reviewed by the state, so is there any further delay there, or?
No, no, it's, it's totally independent by us. You know, it's just basically, you know, observations that, again, you know, observations that, that on the fire ground, issues that came up, you know, what were the issues, and then what were the recommendations to, you know, make them better? You know, there's good points and bad points to it, you know, the things that went well that, that night, and then the things that, that could have went better.
So, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like we could have that by June twentieth, given the fact that we'd like, like to have, I'd like to have ample time to review that. What I'd like to do is request that we move, by the way, I wouldn't be interested in tabling this discussion right now. So I would be interested in moving this to the July eighteenth Town Council meeting to give us enough time to gather more facts, gather more evidence as far as the questions that were asked, and not, and the answers that we weren't able to provide tonight. Get that all in, information in by the twentieth, and then we can peruse that and make sure that we're comfortable with the decision going forward.
Okay. One thing I would, one thing I would, I'm wondering, as, as far as the council's concerned, is with some of the questions that we, that were raised tonight, what is, what is the, what are we trying to do by waiting for this report?
Well, I, again, a lot of the studies that I, that I read talked about, and I have an example I could have read out loud, but there's an example that basically stated that during the process of a single dispatch, because of the additional calls that come in, and because of the additional needs of other EMT, fire, et cetera, sometimes the, the communication between municipal aides, the way that they call out numbers, the way that they call things out as far as their procedures, sometimes gets confused. And so that's one of the things that could support this call center. On the other hand, as somebody alluded to, there was some communication, whereas it seemed like our call center was kind of being the captain, in kind of the way, the way it sounded to, to me, was kind of being the captain and kind of directing the traffic. So if that's the case, then obviously there's more, there's more information about the fact that we should retain the call center. So that's the reason why I'm looking actually into reading some of the detail. As far as some of the facts, you know, we're gonna be going over, over to a Derry call center that's less educated than our Londonderry call center, that does not make any sense as well. So we gotta make sure that that's, in fact, not something that we're doing. And can they provide the additional training? If we do move, if we do move these dispatchers out, is it gonna be something where some of these dispatchers will actually go to work for Derry? There, there go people that know Londonderry actually, and have facts about the, the town, where those streets lie, et cetera, will help dismiss, displace some of the questions that we had earlier. So there's a lot of things that we can piece together now that we know some of the, the burning issues, excuse the expression.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just was wondering if, you know how you guys are still, if people have questions that weren't addressed tonight, other issues, can we send them to you? And get them included if, you know, like-
Yeah, I, I think that's absolutely fine.
Because I think I really would like to know some other things, and rather than keep beating a dead horse, it might make just more sense to send the questions to you guys. But what I'm concerned about, July is a pretty good vacation month. I would ask, I don't, we're, Tom's saying this is prorated, I'm not asking you to stop this, but the summers, you know what the attendance is like, and I really think this is an important enough issue, that it shouldn't be rushed, we can, and, and push it off and give it the time. Don't put, Jimmy said, we can get it done if that's what you guys want. Don't put the, this is too big of an issue to rush this through.
No, we understand, but that's why we're, that's why we're talking now about it.
If I can make-
Go ahead.
I have a list of some things that I think kind of summarize what some of the people had as questions. Maybe Dave, you could give us some sort of report, and actually, if we get it early enough, maybe we can post it so that people can see it and be, come in with at least Dave's version of things, and they have different facts, they can present them. Number one, the, the call volumes of all the towns that, that are in the Derry system. What, number two, what's the level of training that the Derry dispatchers have versus what ours have? Three, I think Mrs., Bob Sauer brought it up, what's the additional licenses gonna cost for the software? I forget what the name of the company was.
Alpine.
Alpine, Alpine.
Alpine, yeah.
Feasibility of-
Maybe that changes, changes things. The cost of the contract per, per the various towns, and maybe we could get some kind of unit cost based on the call volume, see if we are paying proportionally more or not, you know? Any idea of the transition time it takes to get online? Will we have to be running our system for a while too, while we're paying for, for the Derry system? Those were some of the questions I wrote down.
Yeah, there's nothing in the contract about redundant systems.
Excuse me.
There's nothing in the contract about redundant systems.
Okay.
So they'd have to do a-
Immediate change, okay. Fine. I don't know if there was anything else you guys wanted to ask.
I had feasibility of, of, you know, Londonderry being a dispatch center for, you know. It's, it's a question that should be asked. It's been asked, let's look at it and see if it's feasible.
What did you just say, Sean?
To see if Londonderry could be a dispatch center.
That's what I was gonna ask you, so that's what-
You know, but again, again, the last time we brought this up, when we were looking at it before and combining the police and the fire, it was a, it was a very big number to do it.
Right. I don't think that that's what the, the question is, whether or not you can combine police and fire, it's whether you could bring other fire districts into our district.
Correct.
Or, or maybe not. Maybe it is. We don't know.
Right.
Right. But I think, I think, you know, it'd be fair, it's a fair question to ask Dave to take a look at. Tom?
So Chairman, I think we, as you know, the public is just starting to get engaged with this, just, it's just a few days old. And I think that this is such a significant change that we need much more input from the public. Citizens need to have time to get engaged, and it would be my recommendation to table this in a time period that would allow us to actually go through one election cycle. So that not, I am not in favor, I've never been in favor of putting opinion polls on our ballot. I, I don't like that in our form of government. However, there may be citizens, once they become engaged, who might want to put a citizen's petition and put this as an opinion question on the ballot, saying, do you want to move dispatch to outside, you know, outsource the dispatch service? It's not something, you, don't look up here and count on me to put that on the ballot, because I'm not in favor of doing that. But I think that the community, once it becomes engaged, we may find that citizens, when they consider that as an option, at least to get a wider opinion of the community, that may be, may be an option that we ought to give the community a chance to speak on that. Because if we, if we make this decision without that information, Dave mentioned to us earlier, Town Manager mentioned earlier, that it's a five-year agreement with an off-ramp that will take a year at least to execute, so we're looking probably at least a two-year, if we want to back out of at least two-year commitment, regardless of what the citizens think during the next election cycle. So I, I would recommend we, we table this indefinitely through the next, our next deliberative section and election.
I can second that.
Motion.
That is a council's privilege that you're asking for?
Yes.
So you're using, you're using council privilege, privilege to?
No, I, I, no, I'm not asking to delay this one meeting.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that the council table this indefinitely through next spring.
Can you second it, Chuck?
I did.
All right, so we need to vote on that. At, at this point, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't support that. What I do support is getting these questions asked and answered. A lot of work went into this. I, I would like Dave to at least get these questions answered, and-
Mr. Chairman, I think we need a vote, though.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's, there's no motion for a vote.
Yes, there is. You just made it to table it.
I second it.
You seconded it?
I second, I second the council's privilege.
That's not what he said, he said table.
No, I said to table. That's a council's privilege. We don't vote on council's privileges.
I didn't, I didn't make a motion.
Yes.
I did not make a motion. What I said is I would like the council to consider tabling this till next spring. I can make that in the form of a motion, but I, I think that warrants some discussion. I didn't want to shut off discussion with a motion. I think that, that-
My question is, are you invoking council's privilege to table?
Well, I think in, if I, if I were to do that, I think it's only for one meeting. So I might, I might do that if we're gonna try to bring this to a vote.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
But I'm, I'm just suggesting-
Nobody's looking to, to decide this tonight. Yeah, we're not. I'm not. I haven't heard, I haven't heard anybody over here say that they wanted to vote on this thing.
So I'm suggesting a timeframe for tabling it.
I, I think I'm suggesting, and I heard very clearly, that there was a, a motion to a table, and I thought I heard a second, and that's what another couple of counselors considered hearing. So if we wanted to take a vote on that now, we should go forward on that to vote.
There is no second.
Okay, so-
Point of order, we asked the, our minute taker to read back, was there a motion made, or was there, was it a suggestion?
I interpreted it as a motion, I, motion to table the issue until next spring.
Then I withdraw my second.
Second the motion.
Now there's no motion.
Okay, so we need to withdraw the second on the notes, please?
It's done.
Yep. There's an order of process, that's why.
I think we, we, we were looking at continuing this matter until July eighteenth, and hopefully they'd have their act, after-action report done. If not, we can look at it on an earlier meeting and see about putting it over for further time period. But in the interim, we've got some questions for the Town Manager to answer, which I think reflects the questions raised tonight.
Right, and also Kathy had made a point of, if, if residents here, and I'm sure there will be more questions, if they have more questions, they can submit them, and ask them, and have answers. We're not taking any, any further comments, sir. So I think that's kind of what we're looking to do.
I, I'd move to continue this matter until the July eighteenth Town Council.
Is that a council privilege, or are you looking for a second?
No, I'm, I'm looking for a second.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so-
To continue the public hearing.
To what?
July eighteen.
Well, not in a public hearing.
Yeah, you can't, this is a, this is a, it's new business.
Oh, sorry. Okay, then I'm just looking to continue this until July eighteen.
I did.
Is July eighteenth a meeting?
Yes.
Tom, right on the calendar right now. Okay, we have a motion and a second? Discussion? Yep.
So Chairman, my thought is that we're gonna get an incident report probably towards the end of June, and then at that point, is that's when I think we ought to start pulling it apart and examining it, and, I mean, I'm, I, I wanna start with a nine-one-one call, I wanna look at dispatch, I wanna look at our trucks and equipment, how many pumpers, I wanna look at water pressure, I wanna look at hydrants, I wanna look at hose diameter, I wanna look at length of hose, I wanna look at firefighters' personal equipment, number of staff on the trucks, training, I wanna look at the body recovery itself, the mutual aid dispatch, there's that dispatch word again, and how close did we come to burying one of our own firefighters? Those answers are gonna take some time. I don't think that, that moving it into July, into a July time period gets us an opportunity to get those answers with that level of thoroughness, and an opportunity for the public to intersect and speak on this issue, as crucial as an issue it, as it is, and plus the fact that we're gonna be in prime vacation time, and a lot of people are gonna be out of town and not here. So I, I just think we need more time, and I don't understand the, the reason that we need to hurry forward with this. I think that once Derry finds out that we're putting this off a few months, I mean, they're gonna have to change their priorities, because they're looking for some revenue for this next fiscal year, and we're not gonna be in a, in a position to provide that to them. If we, if we delay till July and then make some decisions, it's gonna take some, some time and some, a period, a period to, to implement. So I, I would, I, again, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I, I can't support that, I don't think it's enough time.
Folks, can we just please, we'll just, can we get through this? Thank you.
I don't think it's enough time, and I, I think, again, this is a big change. Again, it's a philosophical change, it's not a, I don't, I don't consider it a financial issue. It's a core competency issue. That's how I, I would suggest that we frame this debate, and, and please, let's get a lot more input from the public, because this affects the public, not just the people here or, or on the council or the people in this room, and they're not fully engaged yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, there's a motion and a second.
Is there any more discussion?
I have no more discussion.
Okay, a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor of moving Resolution two thousand eleven dash oh seven to the July eighteenth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Posed.
Posed.
Two opposed. Motion's three to two in favor of moving it to July eighteenth. All right. That will be it for tonight on this, on this issue. Yep.
I had a question, I've been sitting here not knowing much about this here, you know, I'm asking you a question as a state legislator. Your mouth is closed. I'm asking you, I'm gonna ask you a question if I may, as a state legislator, if you can find an answer, if possible, when it goes to the questions. There's a mandate that's put on businesses in this town for this fire boxes. Now I hear, sitting here talking about, they're already mandated, you force this on the businesses by the code, now you're gonna force a charge on them, where they're already paying a tax. My question would be for the Town Manager to find out, is that proper to do that? My question would be for the Town Manager to find out, is that proper to do that? And then go after, you know, and then transfer that money to another town?
Well, Al, let's, let's-
Well, no, I'm just, I, you know, I like what I'm hearing. I don't know enough. But I'm asking you to put it in your questions.
We're going to move this, we're going to move through this now.
Can you put the, put this in your questions?
Dave will make a note of it, and he'll get you the answer.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
We have five minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Please, yeah. We're breaking for five minutes. No.
All right, okay, we are back online. In a relative term, as Reed said. All right, what are we looking at here? Is this yours?
Yeah. No, we have two amendments.
Oh, okay. I actually have this right here. Okay, hold on one second, let me get my bearings again. All right. Sorry. Okay. Dave is back. I get everybody. Okay, ordinance number 2011 dash oh three is relative to an amendment to the municipal code. Dave, you were gonna handle that one?
Yeah, it's simply a, it's a first read in a scheduled for public hearing on, on May 16th.
Now, do we have to read in all these changes that you made, Dave?
No, you only have to read, or you actually dispense with the reading, a scheduled hearing for May 16th. You only have to read the first page.
Okay.
So just we dispense with the reading of all the changes. There are a lot of them.
Can we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving the hearing to the 16th? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
The easiest thing we've done all night.
Yeah, I'll have you left in on that one. All right, so that's moved to the 16th for public hearing. Margot, you gave me a two, I only wanted one. You might need one. Okay. Staffing levels, community development, and senior affairs. And Mr. Caniel and Andre are going to update us on that and economic development. So go ahead, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Andre Guerin, the Community Development Director. Here with me is Richard Caniel, our Senior Building Inspector, zoning and health, and Code Enforcement Officer. And in accordance with the town policies, that any time we have an opening in a position, it will be brought before the board for, to ask permission if we can rehire that position. As you all may know, that John Gilchrist, who was our Assistant Building Inspector, retired in, on February of this year. And therefore, the position is open. Currently, there are, there was three people in the Building Division office. There was four, but two years ago, we reduced that by one by eliminating the Code Enforcement Officer position, which has been taken up by our Senior, our Senior Building Inspector. That Assistant Building Inspector, obviously assisted in the inspection of buildings, Code Enforcement, zoning, and, and, and health as well. So he's there as a support position for the building official, as well as to give more efficiency to the, to the office as well. We also realize that the, what the position fills is that obviously you have two bodies out there looking, attending to the businesses of the, of the Building Department. As you know, as far as the, what the division will be doing, or what the inspector is gonna be doing, given the upcoming developments that are foreseen in the community, as well as the uptick in activity from the previous year to this year, the need for the Assistant Building Inspector, at least to fill that position, is definitely warranted. This, this board has seen the rezoning of a potential 132 lot subdivision off of Old Dairy Road, as well as the Mill Pond subdivision, which has been approved for years, and is now coming back for more approvals. The Elliott Medical Facility is slated to start construction next year, which will be located across from the existing Elliott Medical Facility, adding another 60,000 square feet. And obviously, the Market Basket in the Pettigrew Road area, the Woodmont Commons, and the Jaxby's Road area are some of the things that are on the ticket now. And therefore, we just ask your permission to rehire that position. As you can see in your handout, the staffing level, we had looked at some of the staffing levels of the communities that we typically compare ourselves to. Concord Dairy, Dover, Rochester, Salem, Merrimack, Hudson, Bedford, Portsmouth, and Goffstown. And as you can see, as of right now, a lot of the staff, when we look at the totals at the right-hand side, right now, we have a total of three, and really, it's only two in the department. It's the Senior Building Inspector and the, and the Administrative Assistant. But also, we do have the Fire Marshal that also helps out on the, on certain aspects of the building inspection, as it exists now. So basically, we have two people in the division, but we have three people out there that will, that will participate in inspection. And again, that Fire Marshal only does a, the aspect of it. Also, adding on to those duties is that the board had, had asked the town manager to have us review the municipal code to see if there's any inefficiencies that could be looked at and, and addressed. And Richard had done that, and, and looked at ways in which there was some redundancy in the way we, in which we do the inspections for mechanical permits. And therefore, in, in looking at the way things are done, and also in speaking with the Fire, Fire Chief, we thought that aspects of that mechanical review will be done by the Building Department as well. Again, out in the field, that will just add more efficiency. Therefore, we got one person doing everything, as opposed to two different departments doing two different things, or doing the, basically the same thing, or inspecting the same thing. So, again, in comparison with other communities, I said, right now, we're, we're the lowest one on the, on the, on the poll as far as staffing is concerned, and we're just looking to ask your permission to just bring it back to what it was two months ago.
Mr. Chairman, I've got three questions.
Mr. Farrell, it's your floor.
So, full-time?
Yes.
Possibility of using a contractor?
Four.
If you could use a contractor instead of a full-time employee, is that a possibility?
Are you talking about a private contract with?
Somebody we contract.
A building contractor?
No, a, a private contractor, we don't pay benefits to.
Sort of contracting with Municipal Resources, for example, that provides all sorts of services. That's a possibility.
Is it cheaper?
Excuse me?
Is it cheaper?
I wouldn't necessarily say it's cheaper. Not at all. As a matter of fact, a few years back, we had looked into that when we were rather busy to do some of our plan reviews for the larger projects. And it was quite an expensive venture to have someone like Municipal Resources provide that service. The Building Department, you know, it's dynamic, it's, it's ever-changing every day. To contract with someone on an as-needed basis, that, that would be difficult when we need someone there when the work arises. So it's, contracting out, it is a possibility, but I do not think it's gonna work for us.
Revenue?
Revenue.
So, it's kind of a two-parter here. So there's revenue that, of course, they'll generate because they go out and they do inspections. We generate revenue from permits, et cetera, et cetera. I guess my big question for you, Richard, is, can you find some more? Are there other things we can charge for?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that. When the council had first set a directive for us to do an efficiency review, I took a look at some of the services that are similar to what we and the Fire Department do. Many of our services are duplicated. And some of the inspections that we perform, our property visits, rather than having both of us do property visits, there are some of those inspections that the Building Department can take on. So I've drafted up a proposal that, that is still in the works. I've discussed this with the Fire Chief, and he's in agreement as well to have the Building Department take on some of those inspection duties. By doing so, Andre had already mentioned the matter of implementing a mechanical permit. That will bring in some additional revenue. I don't have those particular numbers in front of me now, but if we issue about the same mechanical permits as we do for our other subordinate permits, electrical and plumbing, that, that could generate some significant revenue for us.
There's licensing fees on the fire side for like sprinkler systems, alarm systems, stuff like that. I, I've even heard some towns charge licensing fees for operating in our town.
Sure, well, that's, that's another part of.
And I'm sorry, I'm just looking at all revenue possibilities.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, I, I have too. It gets to the point where your permitting fees are just enormous. And, you know, there are some communities that, that charge much more than we do for our permit fees. I have done comparison with the same communities we did for our personnel comparisons, and it's just not, it gets out of whack if, you know, if we raise our fees to a point that would discourage people from getting permits. And then, then we have a problem, so.
Yeah, I'm all done, I'm, I'm, I'm just probing stuff out.
I wanna piggyback on the question you just asked.
Please, please do, I'm looking for any help.
If I may?
Yeah.
In 2010, it looks in a very down economy. It looks like our, our fees collectively went up about 35, 40 percent. What drove that?
Yes, it did. Well, you take a look at, at that other graph where it shows the number of inspections that we did too. That shows an increase in permits. I tried to do a comparison over a 10-year period, just to see where we were in the fluctuation there. Yeah, we actually are doing better than we did in 2009. So that is showing that there is some increase in the issuance of permits. We're, we're generating more revenue simply because there's more activity.
So the, the actual revenue per fee stayed the same, it's just the quantity of inspections?
That's correct, yes, it's the quantity of permits, that's right.
It's interesting, even, even in such a difficult economy, to have that much dramatic increases. I mean, is that, is there some hidden nugget there, Andre, about what's going on in our economy locally?
And we kind of touched on this before, when we, last time I did our economic development update. It's just that, you know, for some, it's not for some reason, given Londonderry's location, and its availability of land, and, and things of that sort, Londonderry always seems to maintain a moderate, a moderate level of development, even in a depressed economy. At the beginning, at the beginning of the 2000, when we were going through a slight recession, we still had, you, you look at our numbers, we still had a fair amount of good numbers there. And then, when we came shot up, we still maintain a fair amount of activity. And the same thing goes with during a recession, although you'll, you'll see a dip in 2000, 2009. But still, I would compare that to other communities, and I think we, we fared fairly well.
Have we benchmarked our, our fees, our cost per, per inspection with other communities? Are we, where we should be, up, down?
Yeah, we're pretty much in line. I don't have those numbers in front of me now, but, you know, I did do that last year when we were looking to increase our fees. And we are, we are pretty much in line with our other communities.
So are we right smack in the middle, a little high, a little low, on the average, you know?
I think we're probably right in the middle, yeah, right in the middle there, not, not higher than the worst. As a matter of fact, we presented that when we did our budget update in November. In November, and we presented all those revenues, and we increased our ZVA fee a bit because it had been since the mid 90s, since we addressed the ZVA fees. So we upped those fees, and we added the new mechanical permit fee to accommodate for that inspection that now the Building Division was gonna do.
So these fees are exclusive of site plan review fees?
Correct.
So these are just building inspection fees?
Correct.
I guess, I guess we, it would, I think it makes sense for us to, to look at where we, where our fee struc- what our fee structure is, to see if it needs to be updated. And, you know, is there, can, could you push it marginally up without pushing us out of the competitive range of communities that we compete with in order to drive a little revenue?
As far as, I know, as far as the Building Division fees, I know we just recently did that just to make sure we, and that's the very question that we asked ourselves, and said, you know, we also have a business friendly attitude that we wanted to promote in town, and therefore, we wouldn't make our fees too excessive to drive people away. But on the other hand, we just want to make sure that we're competitive, that, you know, that we're covering our expenses and, and things of that sort. So I know in the Building Division, and, but we can relook at it from the site plan fees, but we did that as site plan subdivision and application fees. And we did that several years ago, and I think we're right where we, we need to be, but we also gotta reevaluate that as well.
I would certainly not encourage us to put ourselves in a non-competitive stance. But as you know, as we look at the range of fees collected, and what I'll, I'll use the term penetration in that range, if we're penetrated 45 percent in, or are we 50 percent? Could we nudge it to 55 percent? But not something that would make us not, you know.
You get my point. We don't wanna do something stupid with, when it comes to discouraging development yet. We're, we're, is there an opportunity there? Because as you saw from our previous discussion tonight, we're looking at every opportunity we can to either save money or drive revenues. And in the end, it's really the same thing.
Yep. No, understood.
Thanks. I've actually one. Mr. Chairman. Okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, just a bad word in the realm of code enforcement and collections. Is that something that, if you had this particular person could, they could do more of? I mean, you know, I always hear, hey, there's so many things going on, and as, as we talk about, yeah, well, report it to us, if you see it, tell us. That's the, that's the, and when I was on the ZVA, you always used to say, hey, listen, these guys got it, these ladies and gentlemen that see these things that have come forward, there's only one person, there's 24, 25,000 people, a lot of homes to worry about. So I think there's actually, hate to say it, you know, it's not gonna be the most popular thing that people are gonna hear out there in television land, but I think there's opportunity there as well. You know, as you, as, as towns look at these type of things, and, and they see there's a revenue source there. It's not a very popular revenue source, but definitely one that we could look at. Is that one of the functions?
Yeah, as, as far as generating, generating revenue from code enforcement, enforcing violations, you know, that's something that's done through the court system by the setting of, of fines. That's not something that we can necessarily put a dollar value on for any particular violation. So, yeah, it would be difficult to generate revenue from that, that source. But it's always there.
If I could comment, Mr. Chairman? I think revenue from a code enforcement standpoint, while I think it's a, it is certainly a tasty thought in terms of revenue, generating revenue, I think that the primary goal of code enforcement is compliance. So I think also, our experience tells us that, that the judges tend to look at it in that way as well. So if they can, if they can gain compliance through the code enforcement efforts, that's a much higher standard of, of achievement than actually collecting a fine. If they kept to collect a fine, we've lost. Because we have a situation of exacerbated non-compliance. So I think, well, Joe, it's a good point, and it's potential. I think that it's a, it's a secondary goal of code enforcement, and, and not a primary goal.
I just come from the town of Boston, and every time there's a, you sneeze the wrong way, there's a fine in the mail. And, I mean, there's trash, you know, I mean, I, I'd hate to do it to the citizens, again, it's not very popular, but as I said earlier in this thing, we're looking for every way we can balance the dollar. I mean, when it comes to safety, I'm not very interested in risking, obviously, safety. But when it comes to trying to eliminate some things that, that could go towards that, that cost that we're gonna have. And in this particular case, I mean, if somebody leaves their trash out for three days, I mean, there should be a fine. You know, and that should be, and that's what I mean by code enforcement. It's all over towns, I mean, people do that all the time. And so that's, that's where I was looking to go really more with that.
I was just gonna say that, you know, we're, we're, early in the day, we had renaming of streets. Maybe we could just start charging people, you know, like they do with those, at Christmas, you know. You can name a star after yourself, and you name a street, and charge a fee.
Take out a lock, guys. Sell the naming rights to streets?
Well, they keep doing it with the Boston Garden, I mean, you know.
Doing it for free right now.
Spend the fleet, spend whatever, you know. Okay, all right, is there any other questions for the guys for this position?
I guess the only question I have, are you guys having to delay getting permits out? I mean, is this causing a problem, not having the person?
Absolutely.
That was the right answer, by the way.
Definitely. Right now, I've got 16 permits sitting, sitting on my desk pending review. And that's a variety of simple residential projects to commercial projects as well. So they're there, I mean, the permit revenue and the permit activity is there. So, yeah, definitely. Plus the fact that code enforcement and violations never go away. As a matter of fact, when the economy is bad like this, they tend to be a little more than usual. So that's constant. So, yeah, definitely need the personnel.
With this, with this, I'm sorry. I could send a letter for 44 cents across the country if it gets there in three or four days. Or I can send it, you know, express mail. Can we charge for like express service, a premium? On permitting? I don't know what the time period is for your permits.
I don't see why we couldn't, but I don't know if we, if we can accommodate that kind of schedule, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem, being able to accommodate that schedule. Right now, it would not be possible, being a one-man show. Even with two people, myself and an assistant, that's still a difficult task.
You know, the other issue we're into is if, if folks get real express service and really pay a fee for it, then all of a sudden, you've got charge of favoritism or anything else, so. Something else to consider.
Police service.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, all right, so I think the council has had enough. So you need, do we need a vote, or do you want just to go through? Consensus.
Well, they go direction, it'll be good.
It sounds to me like, oh, well, go ahead. We'll start over here, John. You good with it? Tom?
Get somebody good, Richard.
I'm fine. Joe?
Well, I think his business card, if we don't do this, his business card is gonna be too big. I mean, the, the names that you'll have to have underneath your name.
Yeah, that's true, we just gave him another.
Right, so.
The health officer too, that, we just, same bag, Joe, on that one. All right, and I have, I think that the, the need is there, and hopefully, once Woodmont gets going too, that'll keep that department hopping, so. I'm good, so right now, it's, go right ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much. Also, along those lines, maybe if the council can keep in the back of their head the possibility of reinstating our code enforcement position at some point in the future. Only if they'd be a part-time dispatcher. Because like I said, you know, the enforcement volume is always there, it never goes away.
Do a public service announcement while you're here. Can you, can you tell the public when they need to pull a permit to erect a shed?
They always need to pull a permit to erect a shed.
Thank you. That's, that is a frequent debate at the water cooler.
Always. When in doubt, call the Building Department.
Okay, so, moving on, Andre, while you're here, you wanna give us an update on economic development?
Yes, I do. I just wanna go to the other seat over here, so I can.
Thank you, Richard, for hanging out.
All right. Again, Andre Guerin, Community Development Director. You should have handed out two items. A memo from me regarding aligning the economic development update, as well as a PowerPoint regarding just a, a brief overview of what economic development, and at least in Londonderry, is all about. And what I'll do is I'll start with that PowerPoint. This'll give you a little perspective. 54 percent of all New Hampshire total employment resides in Rockyham and Hillsborough County. The reason why I have those two counties, that obviously Londonderry resides in Rockyham County, but we have but Hillsborough County. But 50, we generate, but those two counties alone generate 54 percent of all employment in New Hampshire. 49 percent of total healthcare jobs are in Rockyham and Hillsborough County. And 60 percent of the total manufacturing employment takes place in, in the two counties, as well as 65 percent of the total professional and technical jobs reside in the two counties. Where Londonderry plays a key role in that is that the, our budding communities are running out of space. Meaning that Manchester is getting to a saturation point, Salem is, East Air Force Base, if you wanna reach all the way over to the sea coast, they're running out of space, and as well as Bedford. As far as primary industries, you know, Londonderry is fortunate to have those primary industries. And those are my employees that infuse money into the region from outside sources. And, and as you can see in that list, manufacturing is one of those entities that bring in money from the outside, from outside sources, as well as back office, service operation, business services, those types of businesses that we do have in Londonderry. And also, although three is, should follow after two, but the Level Two businesses are kind of the business support businesses, such as commercial construction, regional distribution, operations centers, and personal service. And then you have the Level Three, which is the retail that derives a benefit from having those primary and second-tier businesses in town. Again, Londonderry has those components. And looking at some in the area, larger towns in the, in our region, and, you know, such as Bedford, Portsmouth, Nashua, where Londonderry does a very good job, and it stands out, is what's called the good-producing employment, which is the, ends up being one of your higher-paying jobs in the region. And as you can see, Londonderry, as far as good, total good-producing jobs, such as your manufacturing, construction, your agricultural jobs, you know, the percent of employment in those, in that sector is about 31 percent. If you look at the other larger communities in there, in our region, we're either, you know, two times or three times as big as far as employment is concerned. And the service-producing, such as your professional service, your informational, your real estate, it represents 59 percent, you know, or $38,000 in annual salary. And the significance of this particular slide is that as far as, as the amount of, the types of salaries that are here, you know, we tend to have higher salaries because a third of our, our employment is derived from that $62,000 salary. And when you, when you meet that against the, the service-producing employment, which is 38,000, boy, it gets you right in, about an average of about $50,000 for a salary here, which, if you go way back to our discussion on affordable housing, gets you right into where you need to be to afford a house in Londonderry. And this is just a illustration of, again, what is a good-producing industry, agricultural, mining, construction, manufacturing. What's a service-providing industry? As you see there, you know, it has things of sorts, wholesale trade, which Londonderry does very good in, retail, transportation, warehousing, again, another aspect that Londonderry does very well. And you can see all the way down. As far as our catchment area, again, this map was developed to show that, based on Londonderry's journey to work information, meaning that people will travel about 30 minutes to go to work from Londonderry. And people will travel from outside of Londonderry 30 years to work in Londonderry. And in that outermost concentric ring, you touch about over 50 communities and a population of over 700,000 people. And therefore, when you look at Londonderry's market area, it stretches as high as above Concord and as, as low as northern Massachusetts. As an example here, as far as business retention and expansion, I know we've, we've. As an example here, as far as business retention and expansion, I know we've we've talked about this in the past, and we'll about, we've spent a lot of time with regard to business retention and expansion, and it has paid off in Lunendary, you have, you got businesses such as Stonyfield Yogurt that have expanded, Bosch, Thermo Technology, that's expanded. And so, those expansions are to be cherished, I should say, because the businesses are choosing, instead of saying, you know what, instead of putting this investment into my business, let me, and as present location, let me look elsewhere, they're they're choosing to stay here. Now, and I'm, and looking at a a business here in town, the L-three Insight Technology, I just wanna qualify the first figure, you know, they do have roughly around thirteen-hundred employees, but the sixty-three thousand dollar figure is a average figure based on the average manufacturing job in our region. So, for Lunendary, I should say. So, that's not per se, I just don't want the HR person in Insight Technology to look at that figure and say, boy, we pay everybody sixty-three thousand dollars. But that is the average salary in that category in Lunendary. So, you have a payroll, based on that thirteen-hundred employees and a payroll of sixty-three thousand dollars, you have, I should say, a salary of sixty-three thousand dollars. You have a payroll of eighty-one point nine million, and I I know most of you are in the private sector, and you understand that, boy, when you have a payroll of that amount in your community, boy, that helps your economy tremendously. And also, as far as the fiscal, I should say, the the service impact, I mean, what we derive from assessment and tax revenue, again, an entity like that, based on the size of that facility and the way our tax rate works, you know, we derive a three-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollar tax revenue for that particular business. Obviously, it behooves us to try to keep that here in the community, and hopefully, they will continue to grow and expand that tax, that assessment and that revenue, and that employee base, so they can better, better our econom- economy, because the higher-paid jobs, the higher-paid jobs that that brings to the community also, I mean, it raises the bar as far as the total jobs here in the community, so we're starting from a high level, as opposed to having most of our jobs in the service-producing one, which generally pays a little bit lower wage, therefore lowers the level of salary, therefore, there's less money into our economy that we can use for other things. So, that's why it's really important to, you know, L-three Insight Technology is identified as a primary business, which we, which was my first slide, or I should say, my second slide, which brings money from the outside into the community, and, boy, we'd like to see those things grow. It doesn't mean that just because we're focused on business, retention and expansion, that we forget the attraction and recruitment, that's always gonna be ongoing. But it does, but it does, this, you know, just wanna shine a little light on that, we've been, even when the down economy, we've been fairly successful with working with those existing businesses that are here. Let us know, one, that, you know, we're here as well, and that we're, you know, that we we do want to address their needs, and 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 also, and I'll, and I'll address that now, even though it's in my other presentation. Paul Donahue from the L-RA mentioned that L-RA had agreed to fund an intern this year, because, you know, with the budget cuts, that's one of the things that we had to eliminate in order to meet the goals, the financial goals that the council set out. But they're, you know, but they did look at the program that we had this year with regard to the intern program, and that intern's gonna be working on furthering that business retention and expansion effort, doing an inventory, updating our inventory of existing businesses in the town, looking at our market catchment area, looking at those things that, you know, putting together a survey, so we can look at, ask those questions of the businesses, so we can better serve them, find out what their needs are, what some of the things that we're doing well, with some some things we're not doing so well, and hopefully, refer, reinforce our our strategy. So, with that, now I'll go to the remainder of my presentation, this, again, just to give you a brief background on on how we go about economic development, and the importance of, obviously, the business retention and expansion, and the business attraction, and how we, and how that can supplement our building of wealth within the community. As far as projects are concerned, we we touched on the Economic Development Committee. Again, the the purpose of that committee would be to provide guidance and input on Lunendary's economic development efforts. And again, a question I would have for the council, what the, if a committee were to be developed, how best could it assist the council? What types of things, you know, would you want this council to do? I know I have my thoughts, but I just wanna make sure that, that if if a committee like this were to be established, that it it meets your needs, it does the very things, it provides you with the input that you need in order to further our economic development strategy. So, those are the type of things, and, you know, that, are a question that I would have for the council. Also, I already touched on the summer intern, business retention and expansion project, and also the Massa Plan, obviously, we're moving forward with that, soliciting names for the steering committee. Obviously, there will be an economic development chapter with that, and, you know, whether this committee is established before or established after, obviously, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna lay down the groundwork to what's we what we look at in the future with regard to economic development. Now, as far as funding projects, I'd be, actually, before I leave the projects, is there any questions on that first part? Okay, I'll move right on. As far as funding projects, as you know, we had submitted a EDA, Economic Development Administration, grant for the sewer portion of the Pettingill Road project. We were unsi, we did not, we weren't selected for funding. We did have an opportunity to talk with Willie Taylor, who is the regional, Regional Director for EDA, last week. And obviously, we're very disappointed with not being selected, and, but he was very frank and 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 shared with us, you know, that that Lunendary was very close, I mean, was very close that he funded, you know, obviously, we shared with them the the importance of the Pettingill Road project. Again, this is not to take away from any other project going in town, the Woodmont Project or the Jackson Street Road, but one of the, one of the things that the Pettingill Road project has is that it has a project that is built, I mean, the Airport Access Road. I had a chance to go up to drive on the road last Friday, and the intersection is in, forest stations for the lights are in, it's paved. I I know that they still have some work to done, work to do. There are turning lanes that go into Lunendary, obviously, they terminate at the at the limits of the construction of that, but it's there, you know, it's there, and 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 that is a key element, that the infrastructure is there that we can hook on to.
I drove up there before the winter and everything, it was really kinda cool. They just didn't pave, you couldn't drive onto the bridges, but all the pavement was there already.
Oh, yeah, it's ready to go.
Is it, would it be appropriate for the council to convene one of its meetings on-site?
Love to.
If we could do a, a kind of a walking tour, or, you know, at least one agenda item?
Sure.
In an upcoming meeting?
I'd be good with that. Consensus is, looks good.
It's still be light out at, you know, at seven o'clock.
That's fine. Okay, so, yeah, we got a consensus. I'd like to do that.
And also, too, Mr. Taylor also recommend, highly recommended that we resubmit our application for the June tenth funding, funding round. And and some of the things that, you know, that we need to address are, you know, obviously, we need to have a clear understanding with the property owners with regard to the easement, and and what's gonna be needed at the time the funding is done. And also, we we need to have a plan in place regarding the funding of, or at least have, start having that discussion on the the funding of the roadway itself, because one of the, one of the components to, I should say, one of the statements within the 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 rejection letter was that they were concerned that if the money was giving, was given to the tunnel Lunendary for the sewer pump station and the sewer aspect of the project, would the, with funding being played for the roadway? And that, and that's a question that we need to answer, and we need to have a solid answer, that we we do have a plan in place, so I I would seek your guidance with regard to, you know, how we can approach the the roadway aspect of that, so the two can coincide. So, again, even though, again, staff were somewhat discouraged with regard to the funding, because we, you know, working with the Rockingham Economic Development Council, I I thought we put together a great application, I mean, there wasn't an aspect on there that we we missed, even though when we went through the, when we went through the letter that we received from EDA, they said, boy, you failed to address some of the policy, standard policies within the EDA application. We shared with Mr. Taylor that we answered each one of those individually, one at a time, in accordance with the EDA policy, and and therefore, we were kind of baffled, I could see if they say, if they said that the way we addressed it was, and was incorrectly state, incorrectly shown in the application or something, but they said that we failed to address, they said, we addressed every aspect of that. So, we just don't understand the, we don't understand the response that we got from there, because we we did. And so, again, he was just, not not having been directly involved, although he he knew the, you know, the pretty much the highlights of our application review, he said, you know, that's the aspect that we just have to reintroduce on our next funding level.
Don, Andre, Tom has a question. Is this a standard application that you, grant, or did you apply for?
For the EDA, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's a standard, when I look at the Community Development Block Grant, I should say, as a, as a example of a comparison grant, to me, that's a standard, you know, you're pretty much write your your project in, and you justify where the money's gonna go, and and then you have some supporting information. I I wish I would've brought the rent, the rent down, but it was literally about four inches thick, our our grant.
I I guess what I'm asking is, were you in competition with some of, somebody else that got a grant, and you didn't?
Yes, no, actually, the EDA grant, you're in competition with the United States, basically. And every, every application that fell, but again, it occurs that out of the nine that they looked at for funding, they funded eight, and Lunendary was a close, with a close eight, and it ended up being nine.
Is there any of those that we could copy, for lack of a better term?
Actually, Mr. Taylor suggested that we do very, that very, not copy, but just take a look at those that were funded.
He must've went to law school.
Pleasureism is a good thing.
So anyways, the roadway funding is something that I I think we just need to delve in a little bit deeper, just to basically create a game plan as how we can go about funding, funding that road, because we're at a point where we have a, we have an engineered plan, we have all the permits in place, you know, we have the road being, and the main road being built, is this that we just don't have a connection on to it, and our our plan to do so. We we tried the, you know, we tried to look at and see if there's any grants out there that we can take advantage of, and unfortunately, they're few and far between.
Was the money we were asking for vastly greater than any other people who got money?
No, matter of fact, when we went for the Tiger Two grant, you know, the twelve million dollars, it was considered a small allocation. So, so with regard to the funding project, you know, that that's where we're at, and 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 that's a discussion that we need to have with regard to funding and of the roadway portion of it. As far as prospects are concerned, you know, we we've had seen some, we we have, are seeing some of the light at the end of the tunnel there, you know, Shelburne Plastics is is taking over, the former DHL Building is retrofitting it to, for their business. And, you know, they're a supplier to Stonyfield Yogurt, and and obviously, wanted to be a little bit closer to to that entity, so they're they're looking to retrofit that facility. I know some of you were there for the Phase Three of the Elliott Medical Center, that Phase Three completes a, and the the total eighty-eight thousand seven hundred square foot facility over at the Elliott Medical Facility, and their grand opening was February of this year. I, back on April first, I intended Tremors, if you remember, Eric was here, the CEO, the President of Tremors Landscaping, he was building a seventeen thousand square foot facility. Their grand opening on on April first, and I know one of the tenants of their building is John Deere, also moved into their facility as well, so. You know, that was a, that was a positive aspect, and that, and and that was a particular company that we kind of worked with from the beginning, about a year and a half ago, and.
Is that a retail, a retail John Deere outlet?
Yes. And I didn't go in, at the close of the time where the Tremors was open, but I believe they are retail, it's Hellboy Mowers and and all the other associated.
Because they they left the community, what, about four or five years ago?
Yeah, yeah, matter of fact, that's where the.
They used to be where Rosen, not.
Rosencrans is over in Derry.
Yeah. The, was it Rosencrans? Yeah, they were there for a little while, right? Yeah, yeah.
And they were in the building where Dela Hunt.
Dela Hunties was there, then Rosencrans went in.
Yeah.
Well, Rosencrans was there, Dela Huntie went in, Rosencrans went and built a big facility in Derry.
Right.
And now it's.
On twenty-eight.
Now it's some sort of multi-use building.
Yeah.
There you go.
Also, I had the opportunity to meet with a potential tire distributor from North Carolina. They're interested in Lunendary as well as a a couple of other communities within this area. They particularly liked the fact that, one, we'll have access to, I mean, Route Three, but also, we're near the airport, and have another access to I ninety-three. So, you know, they they would definitely wanna be in the airport area, and showed them several pieces of land, and one, one, we followed up with 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 the owner to submit, to give them a little bit more information on the site. Seemed to be positive, but just like anything else, you you never know, until, until they contact you again, we followed up, or I should say, staff has followed up with them just to make sure they had all the information about what's to make a decision, and they indicated that they did. So, hopefully, we'll be on the hunt, they're looking to build an eighty to a hundred thousand square foot facility.
Yeah, of course. Has there been any losses of any, you know, businesses, big businesses, in the last six months or so?
No, matter of fact, it spurred me to call one of the, one of our businesses in town, because I had heard through the through the Department of Resource Economic Development, that there was a downsizing on one of the businesses over there at Clubber Lubrication. So, I called them and said, you know, this is what I heard, and said, oh, no, and they quickly straightened me out, and said that they, you know, no, they they hired somebody actually at one point to handle our aspect of their business, but then that business kind of dried up, and then, therefore, they had to let that person go, but, so, although it was categorized as a downside, it was just, you know, not feeling, I should say, really, some of aspects of their business that just wasn't performing.
Thanks.
We talked about the, I I also met with a hotel convention center appraiser, that was interested in in the airport area. And obviously, a hotel convention center is consistent with a vision that was created, and as well as the Gateway Businesses District, and basically, what they were looking to ascertain is that, you know, is there a need for for that, and from my perspective, I should say, my humble respect, I said, I think there is, I think in the region, we're losing two convention centers. One in Dare, in Bedford, the CR Sparks, and that's gonna become Jaguar dealership, and and the other one was Highlander, that was purchased by the the airport, it's gonna be torn down, I believe, at the end of this year. Therefore, I said, in my view, right now, we're, you have some smaller venues, but nothing to the to the level of what the Highlander could accommodate, as well as CR Sparks could accommodate. Right now, you got the Radisson, which obviously accommodates some of the bigger venues, and I know they have some facilities that, you know, that that can handle some of the smaller ones, but, you know, to me, that's really about it. So, you know, we had a good conversation, and 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 there has been some follow-up, so, hoping that might lead to something. Also met with a auto truck repair that's looking to build a fifteen to twenty thousand square foot facility near Jackson Street Road area. And and I I believe that their intent is to move forward with that project. Freezer Warehouse, I I believe that that was here for rezoning, if you were, there, we're gonna be hearing that plan on Wednesday for the eighty-two thousand square foot addition to the facility off of Route twenty-eight, near the Route twenty-eight, one-twenty-eight intersection. And 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 here is, this is an option of all, everything that we just talked about with the addition of a potential retail center at Exit Five. And if all those things were to happen, you know, the range of square footage that would add to Lunendary, both existing and expansion and new, would be between a hundred and forty-five thousand and four hundred and eighty thousand square feet. So, obviously, we're we're banking on, we would like to get the higher number, but but we are working, and a lot of these were, a lot of these potential developments were ones that we just made phone calls on. Either connections made at business, business meetings or the various events that we go after or just, just as part of the business retention and expansion program, just to reach out and just to make sure that they're aware that we're calling and we're concerned and we want them to stay. And that's the key thing, that we want them to stay. And in turn, they say, you know, I'm glad you called because we're looking to do this. I said, great, you know, how can we help? On the marketing aspect, you know, the website, we're working with New Hampshire Commercial Business, Commercial Real Estate and creating a replacement to the Site Selector site. Right now on there, if you were to go to the marketing website and look on Site Selector, we have a program on there where if you put your, what you're looking for, you know, it will come up with some maps that we created that will show pieces of land that meets that description. What we're looking to replace that with is a, we're actually going to tap into the state's, the New Hampshire Commercial Real Estate database, which will give you a good, all the vacant, if you're looking for land, gives you all the land that's for sale in Lunandary. If you're looking for a building, all the buildings for sale and with contact information, location, a lot more richer than what we have right now. So, we're working with that and by mid-May, we should have that up and going. So, I think that would be, that's a question that we usually get from prospects as well as people that are just interested in knowing what vacant land, what buildings are exist in Lunandary that they can get into. And a lot of those existing businesses, existing buildings are being scooped up first before people are making a decision to build new.
Right, that's logical.
And that was the whole premise behind the website is to get the information that the prospects want and the version that they can digest and utilize. And that's what we're looking to do.
Good work. Open up, council, questions?
I actually have a question.
Yeah?
Thank you for the overview. I think one of the things, though, that's missing on this overview is the performance over the past couple of years. I'm a new counselor, I just really haven't been as in tune as I might, I should be. And one of the things I would have liked to see here, and maybe you can talk about a few, is some of the things that actually we've captured. I know there's a lot of prospects, but the way you build, the way you spend more money is by building the top end. That's kind of a business one-on-one. And if we don't have these, more of these, how do we get more L3 Insight Technologies in here? How do we get them to come? So, my thing would be like, in order to measure this, how successful we've been, we need to talk about also what we've had, besides just prospects, what we actually brought in. I know, I know we can talk about Woodmont, but that's not really considered. I don't even know if there's going to be tax revenue positive. So, tax revenue positive sources, I mean, what are the things that have been brought in that?
I'd be more than happy, I have that information. Matter of fact, I think a few months ago.
I know I put you on the spot here, but I just was thinking.
Oh, no, no, I think Council Dolan asked that question and said, you know, what's been the revenue generation over the last several years with regard to economic development? And what we've been tracking since is for the last decade.
Okay.
And I can provide you with that information, square footage, what we've brought in for revenue, the whole soup to nuts, and I'll provide that for you. So, you'll see what's been happening over the last ten years as well as what's happening for the last couple of years.
Yeah, because it was interesting to ask about Pettingill Road funding and, you know, and seeking town council guidance. Well, of course, we could fund Pettingill Road if we had more revenue sources. So, that's, you know, it's kind of one of the, one of the same. So, I'm just interested in really pushing that, that side of it quite a bit.
I am, as well as I am, I continue to want to work with you if you have some ideas of how we can better do that and I can share with you what's, what's out there. And, you know, it's just, it's just like anything, it's very competitive. And, but one thing that Lunandary does have going for it is that, boy, we seem to be, one, we have the land. And we're not rich in existing buildings, though, which it seems of late that's where the prospects are looking for existing buildings. But, you know, we're going to continue to, you know, beat the, keep our heads to the ground and see what comes about and make those contacts. And matter of fact, one of the, like the tire distributor was referred to us, you know, and that's referred to us by a colleague that resides in this, in this region. So, you know, so we're trying to get our word out there, we're trying to network and hopefully, if we can accommodate something, that we can try to do our best to try to keep it in the region because we still benefit.
So, the airport area, see, I, again, you know more than I do, but it's the airport area. I'm hearing there's a lot of buildings that, even when I drove up there a year or so ago, we had something on the ZBA, we had to drive up there on and there were a lot of full lease, full lease everywhere. So, there's not a lot of buildings up there that are open, where to go?
I should say, two years ago, yes. There was, you know, there was, there's buildings over there and there were a lot of vacant buildings. Now, those buildings are being scooped up. Some, there's a couple that, you know, owners is kind of, are not going to, are not quite at the point where they figure out what they want to do with their building. Because I had one in particular that there's been three particular people that are interested in buying it, but the owners is not interested in selling it at this point in time, so.
It's the chicken or the egg of the horse before the cart on the Pettingill Road. I mean, I know if we get the road in there, it'll open up more opportunities for us, but.
And that's what you're finding when you talk to prospects, you sit and talk with them and the first thing they ask you is, well, when's it going to be built? And say, well, I don't know. I mean, the road's going to be built, there's going to be access to the road, but not, you know, obviously, the access that we can provide via Pettingill Road will provide direct access from point A to point B as opposed to going down Industrial Drive, down Perimeter Road into the new roundabout and then heading in through the, you know, to the Manchester Airport Access Road.
So, the governor and many other officials in the state have identified that as a very, very important road to New Hampshire. Is there anything that we can do to, I know we did a few things already, but can we relook at that as far as reapplying for something? I mean, I don't know what there is out there, I'm just, is there something, we can go back to the well and continue to go after that? I mean.
Yeah, we can try. And obviously, with the, with the politics being is in the, in the new regime, those, I don't know if you've seen some of the budget cuts that has been made, but CBG is almost gone. EDA is really the one, one agency that really has been relatively unscathed, but obviously, the competition for that's going to be great. But, but we're going to submit and look for any opportunities that we can. But as far as the well is concerned, boy, it is drying up. The new regime is really cutting everything.
Yeah.
Andre, why don't you send Joe the PowerPoint with all the grants and going back to the original Obama stimulus plan and everything? And that way, he'll have all the stuff that we did in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does it, again, it's just.
Andre, you can send that to me. Actually, why don't you send it to the council, just, probably not John, I think he has it.
Yeah, just really, I mean, fellow council, I'm just looking to see, I mean, this is a major roadblock for us. I mean, I believe Pettingill Road, the development of that road is a major roadblock for our development in that area. And without asking the taxpayers to pay for it, because I'm not, I'm not really into that, how can we do it? I mean, and so, we need the revenue from it.
The governor's on board, I had a discussion with him, I shared it with you guys. I mean, you know, the governor's on board, he's helping in every way he possibly can.
Can I ask you guys a question? You know, you probably know more about it and definitely you, Andre. What's the difference between, what's the difference between, like, for example, the Woodmont project? Like, Mr. Kettenback knows that there's going to be a certain amount of roads that need to be redone, you know. Well, it's, it's, right now, it's theoretical that he knows that there's probably going to be some infrastructure changes he's going to have to make in order to get some of the things he wants to get done. What's the difference between that and if you solicit to a company that wants to come up there to help pay for that road? I mean, what's the difference?
Money. And Kettenback is, you know, the Woodmont project is going to require considerable upside improvements. He knows that, he's bought into it. He's, you know, he faces that every time he puts up a supermarket.
I would, I would say if a company, let's say you have a hundred thousand square foot manufacturing company that wants to locate up there, if they have, and they have, as part of the vetting process, let's say they have six options. And let's say one of their options is hooks it. And they're going to go on a main drag and all they can do is put a driveway in at a parking lot. And if they balance and the building costs about the same, land costs about the same, and Lunandary says, you're going to build your building, put your driveway in, oh, by the way, you're going to have to contribute a half a million dollars for road improvement. And I say, well, maybe I'll go hooks it, save myself a half a million dollars. That's, that's the, I think, the problem with, that's the roadblock that Joe, Joe Spud was referring to is that, that, that cost differential is where we need to help or where we could help businesses get over that hump so that they do land here and then becomes a chain reaction.
But, but can you do this, though? I mean, say that you have the L3 Insight that wants to go there.